Channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.gwendalca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting "Live Streaming", which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100, which is on the screen. Please do not call in advance of the agenda item. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brotman.
Here.
Devine.
Here.
Kasakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Agajanian.
Present. Thank you for Mr. Ajanian. Wood. Yeah. Okay, what's next?
Mayor, next would be flag salute.
Okay. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. This evening, we give thanks for our many blessings. Keep us reminded that we are all traveling the same road towards the same destination. Let us respect each other as we go. And as the council conducts the business of the city, we pray that all the decisions be made in accordance to your plan. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Ajanian. Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be the agenda for the October 13, 2020, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council, was posted on Thursday, October 8, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next would be three presentation appointments, agenda preview for the meeting of Tuesday, October 20, 2020.
Okay. Mr. Volani.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We'll go to John Takalian, Deputy City Manager, to review next week's agenda.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian. I'm sorry, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. Uh, next week, there are no items on the Housing Authority's agenda. However, there will be a joint city council, city council, uh, Housing Authority meeting. Uh, there are three items on that agenda. The first is from Community Development Department regarding consideration of program design parameters of the proposed housing programs to be funded through Measure S for fiscal year 2021. The second report is from Community Services and Parks regarding the fiscal year 2021 second allocation of CARES Act funding. And the third is another report from Community Services and Parks regarding the fiscal year 2021 Annual Action Plan Amendments for the Community Development Block Grant, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Home Investment Partnership Act. Moving on to the Glendale Council meeting in the evening, there are two items under consent. The first will be a report from Library Arts and Culture regarding professional services agreement with LBP Consulting LLC for professional public art procurement and management services. And the second will be a report from Public Works regarding the approval of a final track map number 63273 for sub, uh, re-subdivision of 14 parcels. Uh, those are located at 1505 and 1509 Wilson Terrace, 1500, 1530, 1554, 1558, 1574, and 1578 East Chevy Chase Drive. And finally, at 262, 264, 304, 312, and 322 Sinclair Avenue. There are also two items under action items. Uh, the first is a report from Management Services regarding consideration of a resolution naming the Glendale Police Community Room in honor of former Glendale Mayor and councilmember Rick Reyes. The next will be a report from the city attorney regarding consideration of adoption or extension of emergency public orders related to COVID-19 state of emergency. And finally, under hearings is one report from Community Development regarding an appeal of Design Review Board denial of DRB case number 1709694-C. That concludes the report.
Thank you. What's next item?
Next would be 3B, City Clerk, election update, presentation by Angene Meserhanyi, followed by Philip Verbera, Outreach Manager, LA County Registered Recorder Office.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. Mr. Kasakian.
Before, before we move on to the next item, I would actually like to make a few nominations. I would like to nominate Mr. Henrik Sardar Begian to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. And I would like to also nominate Ms. Edith Fuentes to our Glendale Planning Commission.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council. I have a quick update on the election that's coming up on November 3rd. Um, we've identified all, all our, um, vote centers that's going to be available to vote in person. As you know, everyone is to be, is going to be receiving vote by mail ballot, actually. Uh, county has started sending those vote by mails out. Uh, but there's also going to be voting in person available. We just, um, as of yesterday, we added additional four more. So we currently have 15, and those are the, going to be the final 15 sites that we have in Glendale. Um, one site is going to be open for 11 days, which is going to be starting on October 24th through November 3rd. And then the rest of the sites, the other 14 sites, are open starting October 30th through November 3rd. Um, the hours, um, from, uh, on Election Day, it's going to be open from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and starting October 24th through November 2nd. Um, and the one day that, um, sorry, October 24th through November 2nd, which is the one, uh, site that's open for 11 days. Um, those hours are between 10:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Um, so it gives time to people go after work. Uh, and we have the list up. Um, I can just quickly go through it, but we have Glendale Hilton, Pacific Park, Chevy Chase, Glendale Police Department, Glendale Youth Center, Incarnation Community Center, Glendale Church of Christ, Chevy Chase Country Club, Anderson Magnet High School, Glendale High School, Glendale Express Hotel, Iglesia Adventista Hispania, Crescent Valley High School, La Crescent Women's Club, and the 11 vote, uh, 11-day vote center is the Impression Bank at Hall. Uh, that's going to be open 11 days. And the reason why, um, the numbers are less than from the March election is because of the pandemic. County had requirements of having, uh, 21 square footage of a site. So, uh, that kind of limited us, uh, on some of the sites that we had. And also, this was a collaboration working with our, um, you know, parks and library and city manager's office. And we all, uh, worked together to, uh, make sure that we have these sites. And then, of course, the private sites. So then the next, um, uh, given the fact that everyone's going to be receiving a vote by mail ballot, um, last election in March, we had two permanent vote by mail boxes installed at Central Library and Grandview Library. But for this election, we added six more. And you see the list up. Um, and these are available 24/7. Um, it's outside where the public can access it any time of the day. Um, it has a tiny slot that we can, uh, put your envelope in. Um, and it's clear, uh, clearly marked, uh, that there's no postage needed. Um, and, um, these sites were, uh, the added sites are Dunsmore Park, Glendale Sports Complex, Montrose Library, Pacific Park, Verdugo, and Wilson Mini Park. And this is the image, this is how it's going to look like. The image to the left is the smaller boxes, which, uh, we have the smaller boxes. The image to the right is the large boxes. So everyone should be seeing the left, um, box, uh, installed outside. And, um, and a quick, uh, key dates. Um, starting September 24th, county has already started mailing out their sample ballot, which I'm sure a lot of you have received it. Um, starting October 5th was, um, mailing of the vote by mail ballots, which, um, I've personally received mine, and that's going to go through until October 27th. Last day to register is October 19th. However, um, that doesn't mean if someone's not registered, they're, um, lose their chance to not vote. Because of the new voting system, you can vote in person, register the same day, and vote in person. That's only going to happen if you are going in person. Um, and, um, the, again, just to-
Before you go any further.
Sure.
Because I have shown that picture of the box on TV myself as a reporter. But, uh, are those box, did you see the box physically?
Yes. They're bolted on the ground, they're secure. County has full responsibility of anything that's going to happen to it. Um, if, you know, someone, uh, does a graffiti on it or, um, if they put something-
I'm worried that they moved the box. You say it's bolted to the-
No, it's bolted to the ground. Yeah, it's bolted to the ground. So it's almost impossible unless, you know, someone brings equipment, but it's bolted to the ground.
All right. We'll see.
And, um, so again, the five-day vote centers are starting October 30th. And of course, Election Day is going to be November 3rd. Um, this is just a quick update. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Is there any question from?
Um, Mayor.
Yes. Ms. Devine.
Yes. I did not see the boxes on my screen. And I don't know, did they, were they on the TV screens at, for the residents at home? Because I, I did not see that. Okay.
Uh, can, how come she can't see the box?
I will look into it, Mayor, right now to try to get it up again.
See if you can see now, they're trying to show it again.
Okay.
This is, looks nice.
Does it? Good.
One more time? It's up?
Yeah.
Okay, now I see it. Thank you. They all, they all look the same. They all look the same.
Yes, in LA County, they all look the same.
Correct, Council, uh, Councilmember Devine, they do all look the same.
Okay, because you know what's going up on in San Francisco. I just didn't want people to put fake boxes up. So everybody knows what the, uh, the legitimate legal boxes look like. Drop boxes in Glendale.
Correct.
Yes.
We are, we also have, uh, Philip Verbera here, the Outreach Manager for LA County Registered Recorder's Office. So he'll, he'll answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you.
So I ask, since he's the expert, I ask. So those boxes are not easy to move, I assume?
They are not. They are not. As, as, as Mr. Khani said, they are bolted to the ground. They are not going anywhere.
All right. Okay, thank you. Is there any question?
Uh, yeah, I had a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please. Please, Mr. Brotman.
Yeah, I didn't see the, the picture before, uh, just now. So what was the point that was made about the two styles? Is it, we're just going to see the one on the left? What's the one on the right?
So there's, uh, LA County has two vote by mail boxes. They're the same. One is a little bit larger, where they only, um, dedicated only few of them, um, at different locations, one at the registrar's office. But the one on the left, which is a, um, 32 by 32, um, that's the one that it's installed in all of our locations in Glendale.
I see.
Yeah, and the biggest difference is those on the right, the larger, are ones that we have long-term commitments with location. So we're bolting it down, and it's going to be there for, you know, the next five years. Like Angie said, at the registrar's office, we have no problem having it there for an extended amount of time. Angie mentioned the dimensions, 32 by 32. Just so you're aware, and that's large enough for a human being to crouch down and get inside of that box. There's plenty of capacity.
Okay. But the slot is not that big to get in?
No, no, not at all, not at all.
Thank you, Mayor, for clearing that up.
Yes. If you look at the, if you notice the image on the right, you'll see the slot there. It's a, it's very thin, uh, not like a post office where you, where you can pull the whole drawer down. This is simply a thin slot. And when they are not in use, you'll notice there's a white piece under that slot. They're able to lock it up. So in the interim between elections, those will be locked up. Prior to them being open on October 5th, they remain there in lock.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, Ms. Mr. Khani, for the information.
So Philip, go ahead.
Sure, so Angie, Ms. Mr. Khani gave a great presentation. She got all the valid points in there. I just wanted to add a couple things. Uh, I just want to remind the voters. And first off, before we get started, I, I know we jumped in answering questions, but, but thank you, Mayor and council, for, uh, having us here today to present some of this information. So what you see in front of you is an opportunity for folks to get registered to vote. Like Ms. Mr. Khani said, the close of registration is October 19th. If folks have their iPhone, they can simply scan this, and it'll take them direct to the online voter registration page. Every registered voter will be receiving a vote by mail ballot. But again, that does not preclude you from going to the polls. Uh, as Angie mentioned, starting on October 24th, we'll have about 70 locations across the county. Uh, Angie did put out a flyer and mentioned the ones that are specific to Glendale. But I do want residents to remember that whether it's a drop box or a vote center, any citizen in Los Angeles County can go anywhere. So if you find yourself down in Long Beach for the day and want to pop into a vote center, you will still have access to your Glendale ballot. You will not miss out on any local contests or measures, and you will not be voting provisionally. Uh, regarding vote by mail, some important tips I want to give to the public. The law does say anybody can now submit your vote by mail on your behalf, as long as you both sign the envelope. What I do want to say to the public is please only surrender that ballot to someone you absolutely know and trust. Please surrender only to someone you know and trust. Make sure you sign it. Um, we do have a number of other options for you to submit that ballot outside of the ballot, or the vote by mail drop boxes that you saw. You can also drop off your vote by mail ballot at any vote center. And beginning on October 30th, the number of vote centers across LA County will be around 800. So you'll have many opportunities to drop it off there. And finally, you can also drop off with your, uh, local mailman or in a, in a mailbox somewhere. Uh, just for folks that are concerned about USPS delays, we have been in conversation with USPS headquarters since back in April. We started this process very early. Uh, thanks in large part, I give credit to our, our Board of Supervisors, who are very proactive about approaching us and getting this started early. Uh, they were taking action prior to the state even calling us. Um, you can vote anywhere in the county. Your drop box, you could deliver to a mailman. Also, USPS has made a soft commitment. It's their goal to deliver all election-related material, either from registrar to the voter or from the voter back to the registrar in a period of five to seven days. The state has helped out. Thank you, the state has helped out by extending the period by which we can accept a vote by mail ballot. So now, as long as your ballot is postmarked by November 3rd, we can accept it at the registrar's headquarters up until, uh, the 20th. We have 17 days to accept that ballot. If I had any message to give the people of Glendale, whether you're voting by mail or you're voting in person, please vote early. Please vote early. Do not wait till Election Day. Right, you have weekends, you have weekdays. 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So there's plenty of evening hours in there. So please vote early. Finally, the state has also made another, uh, partnership, and they partnered with this company called Ballot Traxx. You see the address there, california.ballottraxx.net. With this, it's a, it's a free program. You sign up, and you're able to track your vote by mail ballot if you deliver it via USPS. You're able to track it much in the same way you track a package you've ordered from Amazon or eBay. You'll get an alert via text or email, your preference, uh, letting you know your ballot has, has arrived at USPS headquarters. Your ballot is en route to RRC headquarters, that type of thing. And there's the timeline that Ms. Mr. Khani, uh, already shared with us. So you'll see that October 24th is when the vote centers open, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM for all vote centers. And again, beginning October 24th through the 30th, there will be about 70 vote centers across the county. But on October 30th, that number will bump up to approximately 800 vote centers. Again, go anywhere in the county, and you will have access to your home ballot. If the folks, uh, in Glendale are interested in getting the most up-to-date information, outside of having Ms. Mr. Khani give us a call every day and report back, the best way to do it now is to truly follow our social media. In the past, the social media has been a lot of imagery, here's what we're doing. But right now, they have switched gears, and it is all about providing accurate, timely information. And they're including some how-to's. So this is what your sample ballot's going to look like. Here's how you fill it out. Here's some key dates. So please, if you want to follow our social media, that's the best way to get the most timely, accurate information. Um, thank you. I tried to keep it short. Are there any questions? Love to open it up for questions.
Any question? No question? So you explained it so well that there is no question left to answer.
I have a comment, though. I have a quick comment.
Okay, Mr. Brotman.
In the time that you were presenting, I got on Ballot Traxx, I registered, and it tells me my ballot has been accepted. So it's, uh, pretty easy and pretty fast.
Very quick. All they ask you is for a name, birthdate, I believe, house address, and then an email or a cell phone number, whether you want to get email addresses, email alerts, or text alerts. Yes, very simple, very simple and straightforward.
Thanks.
Uh, just so you're aware, all vote by mail, all operations can be viewed from our website, lavote.net. So right now, if you log in tomorrow during the day, you will see the vote by mail teams processing vote by mail ballots. So not only can you track it with Ballot Traxx, you can log on to lavote.net and watch a live stream as we process ballots.
Oh, another quick question, sorry.
Sure.
Um, when do, when, you just said, when do you start counting? What, I might have-
Tally, counting, or what we refer to as tally, does not take place legally until 8:00 PM on Election Night, when the, when the vote centers close. Once the polls are closed, we can begin tallying. Now, what we're doing right now is simply processing, right? Verifying signatures, removing the ballot from the envelopes, ensuring they're not damaged in any way, shape, or form, and putting them in boxes and sending them up, ready for tally. That way, at 8:00 PM, we're able to say, go, and we can start tallying ballots instantly. So there is no count ahead of, uh, Election Night, but we are able to process in advance of Election Night.
Great. And, um, Phil? Thank you for coming in. Uh, and appreciate everything you guys are doing at the county and Secretary of State trying to make this, uh, election run as smoothly as possible. Um, approximately, how long will it take for us to have the final results? I know that the greater the volume of vote by mail ballots, the longer the process, and there will probably be more provisionals as well this time than any other time. Uh, people who may have not received the ballot, or it got lost, or got thrown out in the mail, um, with the junk mail. So, uh, what is the final, um, declaration of, uh, election results? So people are aware of how long it may take.
So while you may be seeing results from media that very night, the final election is not certified and finalized until, uh, November, I want to say 28th. I want to say the 28th, the end of November. That's when we get final certification. Now, you did mention, you know, increased number of vote by mail. Typically, we are not allowed to start processing ballots until, I believe it's 10 days prior to Election Day. But since I did mention we are processing, that's an accommodation the state made. Understanding that the county is sending out 5.5 million vote by mail ballots, they're allowing us to start, begin processing as soon as we've been, as soon as we started receiving those ballots. So we are currently processing. Um, you also mentioned provisional ballots. And hopefully, with the new system that we discussed in the past, uh, Voting Solutions for All People, those numbers will go down as we saw them go down in March. For example, in your example, someone who shows up and does not have their, shows up at a vote center and does not have their vote by mail ballot to surrender. In the past, they would have to vote provisionally to ensure that they didn't vote twice. We now have the ability to spoil that ballot remotely from the vote center, and that person will be issued another ballot on the spot. Again, we're avoiding many provisionals. Uh, the only provision, not the only, but a small amount of provisionals we have would come from conditional voter registration, what the public refers to as same-day voter registration. So someone who was not registered missed October 19th, goes to a vote center, they will be able to register and vote on the spot. However, on the backend, we do have to treat that somewhat like a provisional, verifying signature, address, so on and so forth.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, and you know already from working with us in the past, if need be, we'll run shifts to 3:00, 4:00 in the morning to continue processing ballots.
I know.
We continue to do it again. LA County has a history of running clean, transparent elections. We've never failed to meet a certification deadline, and we don't plan on starting that now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other question? Okay. Thank you very much, Phil, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to leave the council with just this one word. Please, people of Glendale, please vote early. Vote early. Healthy elections equal healthy communities. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, you'll come back for more information at a later time
before the election is over.
Anytime you invite, Mayor, I'm here for you.
Thank you very much.
Take care, and thank you very much.
Okay. What's next, please?
Consent items, including minutes, are following our routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council, or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Thank you.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, your roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman.
Yes.
Devine.
Ms. Devine.
Councilmember Devine.
She said yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be city council and staff comments.
Okay, before I go to, um, my colleagues, I just want to read a few things here. Uh, the 2020 League of California Cities Annual Conference was held virtually, October 7 to 9, 2020. On Friday, October 9, the annual business meeting was held during the General Assembly. And I served as Glendale's voting delegate. There was one resolution up for vote during this meeting, which was this, to support federal legislation that would require social media companies to remove materials from their sites that promote criminal activities. Of the delegates that were present for the meeting, the majority did approve supporting this legislation. However, because of lack of quorum, the resolution did not become official league policy and is advisory in the nature. This is the, what I was present, okay, or participated, sorry. This is the, what I was present, or participated, sorry. And I'm saddened to announce the passing of Linda Burns. I will read the biography first, but at the end of today's session, we will adjourn in her memory this evening. Linda Ann Beck Burns was born in Toronto, Canada, and was the daughter of Jack Kent, Jack, I'm sorry, Jack Kent Cooke, former owner of the Los Angeles Lakers. Linda moved to California in 1969 with her family and by 1970, she settled in Glendale, where she has lived ever since. Linda's ties to the community run deep and wide and are exemplified by the many organizations she has been involved in throughout the 50 years in Glendale. Linda was the first woman to serve as a hospice volunteer in the city of Glendale for the Verdugo Hill Hospice. She was trained by Dorothy Caruso, a nurse noted for bringing hospice care to Glendale. Linda was passionate about sports and was a member of the Southern California Sports Broadcasters since 1977 and served as a board member for the past four years. She was also involved in many other local organizations. I just read some of them. Past Chair and Commissioner, City of Glendale, Commission on the Status of Women, nine years. Past President and longtime Member of the Glendale Women's Civic League, Elk Lodge Emblem and Trustee for over 10 years, Board Member of Glendale Beautiful, Past Board Member, Longtime Member of Days of the Verdugos, Member and Volunteer Community Foundation of the Verdugos, Committee Member, Old Timers Picnic of Casa Adobe de San Rafael, Longtime Member of Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, Business Life Magazine Board Member and served on the Steering and Planning Committee for over 10 years. She was also honored by the magazine as a Woman Achievement in 2011. Past Board Member, Friends of the Glendale Public Library, Health Leadership Roles in the YWCA and YMCA. They say that, and I quote, "The difference between a successful person and others is not a lack of knowledge, but rather a lack of will." End of quote. Linda always prided herself on her strength of will and always accomplished what she set her mind to. She was strongly outspoken, held firm to her values and cared deeply for those she loved. Linda unexpectedly suffered cardiac arrest and passed away on Thursday, October 8, 2020. She is survived by fiance Henry Schussler, daughters Melissa Fredrickson and Amanda Beck and grandsons Tommy and Spencer Dent. A memorial service is pending and will be announced at a later date. And as I said, at the end of tonight's session, we adjourn in her memory at that time. Now, I would like to go to...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think Councilwoman, Councilperson Devine and I would like to also express our condolences.
Please, go ahead. Councilmember Devine, I'm listening.
All right, thank you so much. Well, my heart, heart goes out to Henry and to her daughters and family. Linda was certainly a force to be reckoned with. I, I think we will all, we can all acknowledge that. She served so many hours for our community and for our residents. She had a mind of her own and she said it and people, people listened and she was very, very smart, a very smart woman. And I, I just regret that she's gone. She will be missed by, she will be missed by many. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Just on the passing of my good, dear friend Linda Burns, I, I want to say that Glendale has lost a wonderful soul. Linda was one of those people which was, was always giving back. You always knew where you stood with her. She never minced words, but she was always dignified and polite. When I first was elected City Clerk a number of years ago, she was one of the first people to reach out to me and introduce me to various groups she was involved in and I had the pleasure of serving on some of those organizational boards with her. She was caring and loved her family, always spoke very highly of her daughters, grandchildren. Just a few weeks ago, we were talking about how she had met Senator Kamala Harris's husband at her daughter's wedding because they had attended law school together and this was literally just two weeks ago we had this conversation. We often spoke about Glendale and issues most important to her, which were public engagement and being involved in giving back to your community through various organizations she was a part of and always having. You know, just this spirit of making Glendale proud. The years we served on the Committee for the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be particularly special to me, not just because she always made sure that we had a back piper, but also because it was, because of her involvement in the Sports Broadcasters Association, as you mentioned, and we had so many wonderful athletes, speakers for our events. And I can't believe she's no longer with us. It still does not seem real. She lived not a good life, but a great one and leaves us with great memories. So my deepest condolences to Henry and her family. May your soul be illuminated in heaven.
Thank you very much. Nick, Mr. Najarian?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Before I go into my comments, I do want to say I'm very saddened by Linda's passing. She was a great friend. She always felt free to give me a call and extend her advice on issues before the City Council. And as Paula said, she was definitely a, a force to be reckoned with. I can't believe that she has left us.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments.
Oh, yes, one second. Is, is there Mr. Kasakian?
No, I, I, I just, it's fine. Councilmember Najarian can speak, but then I hear that I have a request of staff regarding the situation in Glendale.
Okay, let's, Mr. Najarian, to finish then, we will continue.
Okay. It has been a very tough two weeks for members of the Armenian community in Glendale, in Los Angeles and across the globe. I do want to thank the organizers of many of the demonstrations supporting Artsakh in the city of Glendale. There have been demonstrations around the world, but bringing it back home in the city of Glendale, the ANC, the Unified Young Armenians and other various individuals. Some of these demonstrations were spontaneous and not planned. I do want to thank the city manager, Rubik Galanian, who facilitated many of these ultra peaceful marches and rallies. I'd like to thank our police department for their patience in directing traffic and keeping all the participants safe, even though some of these spontaneous gatherings blocked some major city thoroughfares and some businesses. And of course, we know the demonstrations are being done to bring attention to the Azeri and Turkish Armed Forces attacking the civilian population of Artsakh. Again, for those of you that don't know, Artsakh is a tiny republic that voted to be independent from the Soviet Union when it collapsed in 1991. Artsakh is the name of the republic for whom we named the two-block stretch near Broadway, Artsakh Boulevard. For many of the Armenians, this is genocide 2.0. The Turks and the Azeris have made no mistake about that. They are after annihilating the Armenian population in Artsakh and I don't think they want to stop there. I think they want to march through Armenia and Yerevan and unite their pan-Turkic vision of one Turkic people across Asia Minor. This is the most important issue in every Armenian's mind, whether you're a little kid, an adult, even senior citizens. Civilians are being bombed and slaughtered. Armenians are literally facing a battle for their existence. Ceasefires are called. The Azeris wait two hours till the civilians return to their homes to assess the damage and they begin bombing again. They bomb the cathedral in Shushi and they call it a double tap. That's the term for it. They bomb it, they wait an hour till people go in and assess the damage and while people are in there, there's another bomb that's dropped on it. So I am making a public appeal. It's individually now, I'm not sure if council wants to join me as a whole. I want to make a public appeal to everyone in the city to support Artsakh and Armenia and to condemn Turkey and Azerbaijan for their aggression. The Armenian community and the City Council have certainly stood up for you in your battles for recognition, justice and humanity. To the Korean community, we didn't waste time to honor the Comfort Women, to erect a statue in our Central Park and every year hold a Comfort Women Day to remember the victims of sexual slavery. To Black in Glendale, we rallied with you, supporting your efforts for human rights and civil rights. We passed a sundown resolution because it was the right thing to do. To the LGBTQ community, we stood with you and honor your cause with resolutions, a month of remembrance and lights of your flag on the city hall. To the Glendale Latino Association, now is the time to make a statement supporting Armenia and Artsakh. To the Glendale religious leaders, we need to hear from you now. To the Glendale Bar Association, who strives for justice, we need to hear from you now. To our service groups, the Kiwanis, the Rotary, we need to hear from you. To the YWCA, fighting domestic violence, we need to hear from you. The Sierra Club, well, I know you have global concern for the environment. The Azeris and the Turks have threatened to bomb the Armenian nuclear plant, which, which would create an environmental disaster almost along the lines of a Chernobyl. To the Sir Optimists, supporting women's rights, we need to hear from you. Maybe no one has asked you before, I'm not blaming you for not coming forward now, but I am asking for you. I'm asking you, please, do the right thing, stand with the Armenian community, issue a statement supporting the Armenians in Artsakh and condemning the actions of Azerbaijan and Turkey. Now, you might think when the, when they bomb our churches and our cathedrals, that we are out for blood, that we'll ask for revenge, but that's not what the Armenians are all about. And some of you may have seen this clip, but Aram, if you could play this clip, this is taken inside the bombed cathedral performed by Sevak Avanesyan, a piece by Gomidas called Now, that is actually the cathedral. Many of us on council, I know Mr. Kasakian has been there, I think maybe Ms. Devine was there, actually bombed and this is, this is what the Armenians do. They, they use their music and their culture to help with the wounds. But unfortunately, the Azeri Army and the Turkish Army are not alone in their battle. They are aided with a group, an army of lobbyists, lobbyists in Washington DC. And we need to call out these lobbyists because they are as much responsible for the bloodshed in Armenia and Artsakh as the armed forces and the bombs and the missiles are. The groups that are lobbying for Azerbaijan are the Livingston Group, Stellar J Communications, BGR, the Podesta Group and DLA Piper, who incidentally is the firm for which Kamala Harris's husband is a partner in. But that's not important. What's important is I would ask support from council to prepare a resolution that the city of Glendale ceases to do business with any of these firms if we have any existing contracts and to ban them from any further representation of the city in the near future.
I will second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
And I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Kasakian?
Thank you. Hopefully we get a report back. I don't know how many of those firms we actually do do business with, but certainly if any firms are doing business representing either the Republic of Turkey or Azerbaijan just based on US law, and I think there's a law that could sanction individuals who are in violation of human rights, we could move forward with that, so I look forward to it. I want to thank our police as Councilman Najarian mentioned, they have done an excellent job over the last couple of weeks just, you know, responding and, and being able to provide support whenever these spontaneous demonstrations and rallies and, and efforts to raise funds have, have occurred throughout our city, organized by various groups. So I want to thank our police, I want to thank the organizers of those events because they're helping raise awareness about this humanitarian crisis. And, you know, it, it is, as was said, something every person, every person of Armenian descent is thinking about night and day and not getting much sleep because you stay up until 2:00, 3:00 AM when it's in the afternoon back in Armenia and Artsakh to see what new reports there are, what civilian targets are being shelled by cluster bombs, which is a clear violation of international law, which Azerbaijan has been doing in Stepanagert, a city that just a few years ago I had the opportunity to visit and meet the mayor there, who was marveling at what we do in Glendale. And I told him, I said, "What we do is nothing compared to the, the conditions under which you have to survive and thrive here." And it really had made Stepanagert into a beautiful city and now to see the images on television of the Azeri bombings and, from the military on civilian targets, there are no military targets in Stepanagert is actually heartbreaking. They've even hit a hospital. And seeing as to what's happening right now, how overwhelmed they are, especially the hospitals and field hospitals, it made me think how, just on September 23, there was an article that said that here in Glendale, we had received a shipment of protective, personally protective equipment, COVID-19 protective equipment from Artsakh. This tiny, unrecognized by anyone else in the world, group of courageous people living on their own land, trying to eke out a living, had found it in their hearts to be able to send protective equipment here to Glendale, to us, Glendale. A republic of 150,000 was aiding a city of 200,000 here. And, you know, I've, I've been in communication with folks in Artsakh and in Armenia, especially those who are headed there for humanitarian aid, to cover what's happening. And the people who are there going into the hellfire that is raining down upon them, asked what, how we could assist them with protective equipment as they go, but they don't need masks, they don't need rubber gloves. They've made requests for helmets and for protective vests, especially for those individuals who are in the civilian services, the first responders, the firefighters and the police who still have to respond to emergencies as buildings are collapsing and shrapnel is, you know, the bombs are exploding around them. I do know that there are some, I've, I've asked that our police chief and I'm asking formally today and requesting a second from my colleagues for us to look into what surplus protective equipment that we have, military grade or not, that we can help send to those who are involved in the humanitarian rescue efforts, those doctors who are out there responding to this human humanitarian crisis and find ways that, to get that assistance to them. I've reached out to a number of other agencies as well, trying to see because apparently protective vests are replenished, they have a certain lifespan and before that lifespan is through, for various reasons, we end up getting them, but the folks in Armenia and Artsakh need them immediately. So I would like to ask that and see if there is a second.
I will second.
Thank you. And there is a letter forthcoming, Mr. Mayor, to you, making this request from the Commissioner of the diaspora office, but in addition to that, and if there's anyone watching who knows anyone who has access to such equipment, please let us know. Contact the city and we can hopefully make arrangements either through various nonprofits, we can reach out to whoever it may be, Red Cross, Amnesty International, we should leave no stone unturned. And I just want to, for anyone who's unfamiliar with what's going on, I just want to remind folks that the demonstrations that have been occurring around the country, as large as they are, as alarming as they are, I mentioned in my social media feed that just by their attendance, there was a demonstration of 100,000 people in downtown Los Angeles. Armenians are realizing that this is an existential struggle and it's to the point where they think that the Aliya regime in Azerbaijan is a greater threat to them than COVID. That much is obvious. But the key is they're demonstrating for peace. All the demonstrations are asking for peace and yet, Zari government, Zari Council General here in Los Angeles and other news outlets shamelessly, shamelessly try to paint this as a picture of violence erupting as though it spontaneously combusts. Not that there was one side that is clearly the aggressor that crossed no man's land with tanks and personnel to inflict harm and, and chaos onto the civilian population. And it shouldn't be lost on us that yesterday, what used to be Columbus State is now in California known as Indigenous People Day coincides during the time that this war was happening, as indigenous people are being attacked on their own soil. happening, as indigenous people are being attacked on their own soil in Armenia and Artsakh. So those are just my thoughts. Thank you to my colleagues, both the council member, Bratman and Divine, who simultaneously raised their hands when I asked for that protective equipment, and we will all tensely and carefully and closely watch the situation as it develops, hoping and praying for peace. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I, Ms. Divine, or I have something to say in this, but...
Please, please, go ahead, Mayor, please.
I just, I mean, I have been on, I have been on TV for 21 years, and I have a program every night, except if I'm here. But since they were showing the church, in 1994, I got married at age 42, and I have decided to go for honeymoon to where you were looking at, and there war was going on, and that was the only place I wanted to be. And this church has been, when I got there, this was, war was going on between Armenians and Azeris, and they freed this church, worse than what you see now. And, and I can't forget that this was a stable. I mean, Azeris turned this beautiful church, one of the most beautiful church you can find, as Armenian church, a symbol of Armenian church, which if you pay attention, it's, the base is a cross. Armenian church base is a cross, so it's built on a cross, the way they built the church. So I was there, inside that church, while the war is going on, and I felt so sorry because they spent countless hours and probably millions of dollars, they brought to what it was after the war. Of course, for years, they worked on this church, endless time spent on this church, and I felt so sorry that I see this church ruined again. Kazanchetsoz is the name of this church. I wish I would bring the pictures from outside this church, you could tell how beautiful it is. It felt so bad that it has been ruined again, and I know they will build it again. Those who are Nagorno-Karabakh people, those who live there, there are people who are not afraid of war. They will, you know, defend their homeland regardless what, and they will build this church again, and hopefully, we're gonna go and see it as beautiful as it was. Twice it went through this, so this will be the third time. So we'll see this built, and, I mean, I don't know, there are a few other things, but I don't want to continue, because I remember what I saw there. I have to bring the picture of it, I don't want to say it now, what I saw during that war. A picture which will be better than what I say, so I leave this for maybe next week or week after, since this came up for 21 years, or 26 years before when I went there, I never said it, but I will bring, on TV, I had the opportunity for 21 years to say it, I never said it, but I will bring here to show that what they told me and what I saw in 1994 during the war at that time, when they freed Artsakh. Thank you. Ms. Divine?
Thank you, thank you. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Najarian for sharing that beautiful piece with all of us in the community that's watching tonight. It was certainly a wonderful experience. I have to say, my heart breaks for the Armenian community, and the saddest part is the fact that I think every Armenian in our city knows someone in Armenia, or is related to someone in Armenia, or knows someone. I recently received a phone call from a friend, and she was on her way taking medical supplies to some, someone that was going to Artsakh the very next day, and she mentioned to me that she was looking on Facebook, and she saw these two young boys that were dressed in army apparel and going to participate in the war, and when she got home, she showed it to her daughter-in-law, and it was her daughter-in-law's cousins, the two boys. And that's what's so heartbreaking, is that everyone here, every Armenian that's here, and myself, are heartbroken over this horrific war that's going on over there. So I just want you all to know that I stand with you, and I pray for peace. I pray for peace for all of you, for all of us. I know it's very hard for all of you these days, but I think if we all pray and try to help as much as we can, I know that there are donations being taken, monetary donations, and we can all donate a few dollars to the cause, and that would help as well, because then they could get supplies to Artsakh. So I just wanted to, and I had other things I was going to say tonight, but they seem so trivial at this point, so I just want everyone, you to know, Ara, and Arti, and Brej, and all of my Armenian friends, and even those that I don't know, that I stand with you, and I pray for you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bratman?
Yeah, thank you. I have a few items, but let me start with my own comments on the situation in Artsakh. As you know, I'm not of Armenian descent, I don't have personal friends in Armenia or the emotional connections that my colleagues and others have, so it does make it hard to fully appreciate what the community is going through right now. However, the closest I can come is an experience that I had, being a Jewish-American during the Yom Kippur War in 1973, when Israel's viability was threatened in a similar way to the experience that Artsakh is facing now. I was 14 at the time, but I remember the combination of pride and fear, when both of my parents, who were physicians, flew to Israel to work at the Hadassah Hospital in Jerusalem so that they could help relieve Israeli doctors who are needed at the front. I was, and I am fully American, but I've always felt the pull of the place that my ancestors came from and later established as a haven after the Holocaust. So I do hope that I am able to come to some level of understanding of the emotions that are going through the community, the Armenian-American community today. I just want to say, I am 100% with my Armenian friends and constituents and colleagues in condemning the unprovoked aggression on civilians by Azerbaijan and Turkey. I support calls for the US government to use all of its diplomatic and economic power to bring an immediate end to the conflict. And finally, I want to say something that is difficult, but as a Jewish-American, I am deeply, deeply troubled by reports of Israeli arms sales to Azerbaijan. I want it to be clear that I condemn that, and I call on Israel to cease any such activities. If I may, and I know in the context of what we've been discussing, this sounds a little trivial, but I do want to continue with a couple of other things.
Please, go ahead.
So I like to give an update when I attend these outside board meetings. So I did attend the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, Energy Environment Committee meeting last week, and I just wanted to relate two interesting reports. One was a report on traffic safety. The chief safety officer at Caltrans read out the findings of something called the Zero Traffic Fatalities Task Force. And for those of you who don't know, this task force was set up under Assemblymember Friedman's Bill AB 2363, which she had, she introduced and the governor signed in 2018, and that bill was designed to look at how we set speed limits in California, and any solutions to reducing traffic-related injuries and fatalities to zero. I know that speeding, addressing speeding and traffic safety are priorities for every one of us on council. I've previously asked staff to come back with a report on creating a Vision Zero Plan for Glendale to eliminate traffic fatalities and pedestrian accidents here. So when that staff report does come back, I would like to invite the chief safety officer of Caltrans, Ms. Harpenter, to come and give us a presentation, so that we can look at the tools that we have now to reduce speeding, and also so that we can be prepared to support future legislation, because I understand that Assemblymember Friedman will be taking this material, these findings, and with her colleagues will be crafting legislation that will allow us to have more flexibility in how we set speed limits and how we enforce traffic speeding. So that was one report. The other was, this will be shorter, but there was a very interesting report on vehicle electrification, and it was really interesting in light of the fact that I had just raised at the last council meeting, that we requested that we develop a plan to electrify our municipal vehicle fleet, and also, as you know, the governor's executive order, which is to get to 100% electric vehicle sales by 2035. So this was a great report, it showed pathways to getting to 100% electric, not just on the municipal side, but also personal vehicles, commercial vehicles. It looked at the technology challenges, which are not insignificant, and it also looked at the financial impacts, but overall, it was a very encouraging story. So I have already connected our city manager, or I, I'm sorry, I asked him to get in touch with this presenter at Caltrans, and I'm sure he hasn't yet, but when, when the time is right and staff is ready to bring back something, I would like, I would certainly like him to get their input. And also, I learned that Culver City has a plan for 100% electrification of its vehicle fleet by 2029, so I am putting our city manager in touch with the staff person in Culver City that put that plan together. And like us, they are a full-service city, they don't have, I believe, they don't have their own utility, but they do have their own fire and police, and I think all the other services that we have. So I think theirs could be a good model as we look at fully electrifying our municipal fleet, and that's where I'll leave it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Staff comments? Is there any comments by staff?
Councilmember Divine has another comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Divine?
Thank you. I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Bratman had to say, because the comments I was going to make was, were about the League of City Conference that we attend, the virtual conference that we attended, and one of the bits of information that I was going to share, and this goes right along with your electrification, because I went to a session on that, but SoCal Gas has a program called Charge Ready 2. It is the largest electric charging program in the country. They have, they have $450 million in grants for infrastructure and charging stations. 30% of that $450 million is for, is set aside for condos and multifamily units, and they want to assure equity in the funding. So I'm just mentioning that so that staff can maybe look into this, it's called Charge Ready 2 Funding Program, because, you know, that's the problem with dealing with climate change and what we're going through, about to go through, is we need funding, and we need funding from the state and anywhere else that we can get it. So this is a good source. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, okay, staff and comments?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't have any.
Okay. What's next?
Mayor, we have community event announcements, I have...
Okay, one second.
Four people waiting.
Now, I would like to take any calls from the public as it relates to the community event announcement. We will be taking five calls. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Najarian.
Eric Early, you're live, Eric?
Hi, this is Eric. Please let me know when you want me to start speaking.
Go ahead, Eric, you're live, you can go ahead.
Thank you, this is Eric Early, I'm running for Congress in California's 28th District. Given the solemn and very serious events going on, I'm not going to be using this to politic. I want all my many friends in the Armenian community to know that I stand with you, I stand with Armenia, Artsakh strong, and I was very proud to walk in that incredibly huge rally two days ago down Wilshire Boulevard, and I'll be at Thursday's rally at the memorial. I support Aaron Najarian's proposed resolution, and I condemn, and we almost condemn, the Azerian-Turk aggression, and we should stop all forms of aid to those two countries. So thanks for having me, you can read more about me at ericearly.com, and I respectfully ask for all of your votes. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Early. Next caller, please.
Next caller is Frida Josepian. Frida, you're live?
Oh, hi, dear council members, my name is Frida Josepian, and I've been resident of Glendale over 30 years. I would like to share some of the concern regarding, can you hear me?
Yes, we are listening.
Yeah, I would like to share some of my concern regarding how our taxes are being spent within our city. Almost everyone I know has been impacted by COVID, except city and state employees, they're all getting paid their full salaries while city services are less than before. We're also in the process of hiring a new city manager, and I'm baffled as to how we can pay our city manager almost 35% more than governor Newsom. So I'd like some sort of explanation later on, I know you cannot comment right now, but I want to know how we can justify paying our city managers almost $400,000 full package when our city population is only 200,000. I'm just begging you guys, let's get back to being fiscally responsible and fiscally stable and save our city from bankruptcy at some time in the future. That's all. Thank you very much for everyone.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Alex Gazapur? Alex? Alex, can you hear me?
I can. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Agajanian, city council members and city staff. I'd like to come out here and speak about an event that's...
Excuse me, excuse me. Can you say your name, please, because I guess we didn't say it right, so...
Oh, Alex Gazapur.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Honorable Mayor Agajanian, city council members and city staff, tomorrow, October 14th at 1:00 PM, the Glendale Fire Foundation, along with the Glendale Fire Department, will be hosting a virtual award ceremony. The Glendale Fire Foundation is committed to enhancing the mission of the Glendale Fire Department, so we are dedicated to promoting the well-being and the safety of our community and its citizens through the supportive services, educational programs, projects, and community initiatives led by the Glendale Fire Department. One of the highlighted programs is the support of the Glendale Fire Department Awards Luncheon. And as we all know, due to COVID-19 and the required state mandates, we'll be unable to gather this year as we normally do. However, we at the Foundation feel strongly that the dedication and commitment of the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department, especially this year, is very important to recognize. I'd like to invite all city staff, everybody listening, city council, residents of the city of Glendale, to join us tomorrow, October 14th, at 1:00 PM virtually by logging on to www.glandalfirefoundation.org, and click on the button that says, "Click here to watch virtual award ceremony." This program is free and can be viewed at no cost. We also have a very special live program that's going to be in store tomorrow as well, too. I won't give away any of the surprises, however, I will say that it will be heartwarming, it will be fun, and it's definitely going to be a event to remember. Actually, I take that back, I am going to give away a little part of the show. So during the program, two of the Glendale Fire Department's 2019 rookies will perform their own live performance of "Amazing Grace" to honor fallen firefighters, with a special honor for the San Francisco firefighter, Jason Cortez, who was killed in... honor for the San Francisco firefighter, Jason Cortez, who was killed in a tragic training accident last week. So again, as you see the flyer posted up in front of you, this broadcast is live. It is a virtual awards ceremony that is at no cost. Again, clicking on to www.glandalfirefoundation.org and participating in this free awards program, we ask all of you to do and invite all of your friends and colleagues as well. And we are still accepting sponsorships for this event. We've had a plethora of sponsors come in from the community and have poured their donations into this event. But again, we're here to invite you tomorrow at 1:00 PM to log on to the glendalefirefoundation.org and to participate in this virtual awards program honoring the hard work of the men and women of the Glendale Fire Department.
Did you say you're not giving anything away? How about these nice fire trucks?
Are we, are we giving, you know, I would, I would, I would pose that question over to Chief Lanzus and see if he has his extra fire trucks to give away. But, you know, that could be, that's a question that I would, I would pose to him.
He's here, he's listening to you. He's not coming forward to see how we can get those fire trucks.
I think a ride on there would be a good one to ask for at this time. I'm not sure if any donations for fire trucks are coming for us, but we can table it and ask.
Mayor Agajanian, we will get a fire truck for you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next caller, please.
Devon De La Paz. Devon, you're live.
Hello?
Yes, Devon, you're live.
This is, I am Shirley De La Paz. I am Devon's mother. I am here with her. My daughter was, excuse me?
We are listening.
My daughter was attacked at the property at 113 North Cedar Street. She was literally picked up and her head bashed into a fire box on the fence. She has been fighting for justice ever since then. The cops, the district attorney, and the detectives all have been negligent with this case. I have, this case has been declined for no reason whatsoever due to the people that attacked me lying, which they have no evidence for. I have a video of me being assaulted, and if this does not get escalated, I will sue the city of Glendale. She also, after the fact, has been intimidated and harassed by the woman who picked her up and busted her head open. She's got a one-inch scar on her forehead. They, she's been told, call the police, they will come and help. They don't, they don't do anything. They have all been neglectful. This law in Glendale and the police are not doing anything. The DA was absolutely rude to me, and my case was declined for no reason. I was violently assaulted with an inch laceration to my face by a complete stranger. And to top it off, to cover themselves, the district attorney's office in Glendale turned this over to Lacy in Los Angeles, who sent another letter with no evidence, no reason except, oh, we looked over this case, we're not going to pursue it. That is, is really horrible. This was a brutal assault. We have also been told that Glendale doesn't want to handle it because they don't want to pay for it. By the way, I am disabled in another, the Disabilities Act, this is not any way to be treated, and I am not able to physically attack anyone. This woman has lied, and she has been harassing me outside, she has been stalking me, and the police of Glendale will not do anything about it. And Detective Shores was absolutely negligent on this case, as well as the DA, as well as the officer sent in who reported the case, as well as the DA Mundor. Thank you. I'm sorry, is that our three minutes?
Thank you. Are you finished?
Yeah, do you have any questions or anything?
We can't get involved with, at this time, but I will ask our chief and city attorney to look into this.
You will ask, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. You will ask who?
I will ask our city attorney and police chief to get in touch with you. Do we have the phone number?
Povilades will get in touch with me. I've left four messages for him. He will not call me back. Hopefully, if you can tell him to call me, he will.
I will ask them to call you. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm speaking with the mayor of Glendale right now?
Yes, yes.
And so you're going to, to just to confirm, you're going to ask Povilades and who else to call me?
City attorney.
The city attorney. And what is the city attorney's name, please?
Michael Garcia.
Michael Garcia.
Yes. Okay, thank you. They will get, they'll call you back. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Mayor, no more callers.
Okay, thank you. All right. What's next, please?
Next would be seven, adoption of ordinance, Glendale Water and Power, regarding consideration of ordinance to ban the sale of Mylar balloons in the city of Glendale. Ordinance amending Title VIII of Glendale Municipal Code 1995, adding Chapter 8.18 relating to the prohibition of the sale of Mylar balloons within the city of Glendale. Two, resolution amending the citywide fee resolution regarding administration citation, fine amounts for sailor of Mylar balloons violations, and amending the citywide fee schedule to add violations subject to fines for sale of Mylar, Mylar balloons violations.
Mr. Golanyan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Agajanian, Member City Council. Council had previously asked that this item be brought forward in a report, and staff had completed that, and then were directed to draft an ordinance that council introduced on September 29th, and we are bringing it back for adoption tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Steve Zorn, General Manager, Water and Power.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to move this right along, I'm going to go to Doreen Marterosian from the city attorney's office, who has done the yeoman's job on this, and let her go through a brief presentation, some of the alternatives that we've developed, and then open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Zorn. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, council members. My name is Doreen Marterosian. I have a very brief presentation to go over the alternatives. As Mr. Golanyan and Mr. Zorn indicated, we came before you on September 29th. This is the council introduced the ordinance as originally proposed, and also asked us to provide the council with some alternatives for consideration. So the first slide that we have up when you're viewing is, actually goes over the original ordinance. The ordinance will add Chapter 8.18 to Title VIII of the Glendale Municipal Code. And the section that the city council requested alternatives on was the actual ban of the Mylar balloon sales. That would be a proposed Section 8.18.030. And as originally introduced, the section bans the sale of Mylar balloons, whether or not inflated with helium or gas, which is lighter than air. And it also, subsection B states, it's unlawful for any person or corporation to sell or offer to sell any Mylar balloon, again, whether or not inflated with helium gas, which is lighter than air. Next slide, please, Zorn. So we have four alternatives for your consideration. They are attached to the council report as Exhibit A, but I will go through each one of them. Alternative number one, it still prohibits the sale of Mylar balloons filled with helium or gas, which is lighter than air, within the city of Glendale. The exception in this alternative is it allows the sale of Mylar balloons filled with air only, usually they're normally up on a post, and deflated or unfilled Mylar balloons. So someone could walk into a store and purchase Mylar balloons in a package, which are, which have not been filled with air or helium. Next slide, please. Alternative number two, again prohibits the sale of Mylar balloons, which are filled with helium or gas lighter than air. Now, this exception includes the sale of Mylar balloons filled with air and on a post. You'll notice that this exception does not allow the sale of deflated Mylar balloons. Next slide, please. Alternative number three, again prohibits the sale of Mylar balloons filled with helium. It has an exception that allows only air-filled Mylar balloons on a post or a decorative structure. And we have some samples of various structures that both latex and Mylar balloons are affixed to. These balloons are reportedly filled with air, not helium. Next slide, please. Alternative number four, again, would prohibit the sale of Mylar balloons filled with helium. And the exception here allows air-filled Mylar balloons, which are on posts or affixed to decorative structures, as well as deflated or unfilled Mylar balloons. Next slide, please. Now, this is the summary of all of the alternatives. We have at the bottom, just as a reminder, that all of the violations in the original ordinance would apply to any one of these alternatives, which means we would pursue these violations with the issuance of administrative citations. You have a resolution for you tonight, which was carried over from the last meeting. After, the first citation would be a fine of 100, and the fines escalate. The city attorney would also have the option of filing a misdemeanor complaint against the violators. The alternative, Exhibit 1 lists, prior to each one of the, it has a narrative that explains what the alternatives are. We did have, and we've, we've included it in the narrative in Exhibit 1. With alternative number one, and all the alternatives that allow the sale of deflated Mylar balloons, there's the risk of, you know, individuals or companies purchasing them and then immediately going elsewhere and filling them with helium. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention. And next slide, please. I believe that should be it, and we are available for any questions.
Is there any question from our attorney? No question? Well, that's great.
I think Councilmember Divine may have a question.
I have, I want to go to the, do you have questions?
Oh, are there, are there phone calls?
Yes, I want to go to the callers.
Okay, go ahead. Okay.
Yes.
Ed, you're live. Ed, can you hear me?
Yeah, kind of same. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Ed Randa, and I represent the Balloon Council in Los Angeles County. The Balloon Council is a national organization, and we are opposed to this ordinance. I'd like to remind the council that this issue is unique to California. We are working alongside San Diego Gas and Electric and the state of California to mitigate these problems. This ban would be devastating for our local Glendale balloon industry, business owners, costing good quality jobs, along with loss of revenue stream for the city. Major grocery chains, their employees, and vendors are among many others who will be severely impacted by this ban. The mayor has mentioned more than once that he has seen many boarded up businesses he drives to Glendale and doesn't want to see this anymore. This is a real problem for real merchants already being hit hard economically by the pandemic. Thank you for considering alternatives with small businesses in mind, but frankly, they don't go far enough. Education and enforcement are the answers. The product is not the culprit. People's behavior needs change, and we still believe education goes a long way, with children and adults supervising children. The city needs to be, the city needs to be the first municipality in the state to enforce the current California balloon law, issuing fines to violators. That will demonstrate leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Steven Mayhew. Steven, you're live.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. Mr. Mayor, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation for the council and politely request a time extension to allow for my presentation. I will keep the presentation brief.
All right, let's see.
Thank you. My name is Steven Mayhew, and I work for LA Balloons, located here in Glendale, and I'm part of the organization Balloonfacts.org. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to better explain the balloon industry and how this proposed ban would affect us. I also have some exciting news about a new manufacturing process and how the council can implement a reasonable approach to achieve a reduction in incidences without causing significant harm to the 200 balloon businesses here in Glendale. If we could go ahead and move to Slide 1. Balloons are a very active industry in Glendale. A balloon ban would severely cripple many small businesses in the city. Banning balloons will not solve the problem of power outages. It only hurts the businesses in our city, and it will force out the law-abiding businesses who properly weight balloons down. We can move to Slide 2, please. The council is not considering the economic impact of this ordinance. On the left side of the slide is a list of Glendale businesses which will be affected. With 30 to 50% of revenue coming from Mylar balloons, a ban will cause layoffs and business closures. It will also directly affect the $500,000 in sales tax revenue for the city. If we can move to Slide 3, please. For these economic reasons, there was an outpouring of opposition from many small and large businesses and residents. Many joined the coalition to oppose a ban on balloons. If we can move to Slide 4, please. Here you'll see the market segmentation report. The upper section shows the comparison of helium-filled Mylars versus air-filled Mylars and uninflated Mylars, which are flat balloons. This demonstrates the largest market share is for helium-filled Mylar balloons. The lower section compares the total amount of Mylar and latex balloons sold in California each year. In the last meeting, Councilmember Divine said latex balloons outsell Mylars. This is correct, but since Mylar balloons are sold at a much higher price, it results in three times the revenue. It is a difference of $440 million. Mylar balloons make up the highest percentage of balloon revenue in our state. If we can move to Slide 5, please. It is important for the council to understand how Mylars are used. You'll see here the various ways we use balloons, filled instead with air, which pose no threat to the city. Image 1 and 2 demonstrate balloon decor, including accents of Mylar balloons. These designs are attached to framing to hold them up. Only air was used in these designs, no helium. Designs like Image 1 can sell for up to $12,000, and designs like Image 2 can sell up to $1,000. Image 3 demonstrates the fastest growing trend in the industry. It is air-filled balloon deliveries. A design like this sells for $400. Image 4 shows how customers are using balloons in their homes during COVID, by taping the balloons to a wall and hanging them from the ceiling. Designs like this sell up to $200. None of these designs float. They are not a threat to the city. If we can move to Slide 6, please. This slide provides a diagram of how air-filled balloon designs are created using framing and adhesive. No helium is used, only air. These types of designs are very popular. They generate revenue for our Glendale balloon businesses and pose no threat to the city. If we can move to Slide 7, please. It is impossible to know if the data the power company's report is accurate. We've been informed by local utility linemen that it's common to attribute the cause of an outage to a balloon or a small animal when they are unable to identify the exact cause. In the GWP outage report, causes were separated out, which would normally be linked together. For example, palm fronds and tree issues are always connected together, and squirrels and birds are always counted together. However, the outage reports separated these causes into other categories, giving an appearance of not being a large issue. The balloon percentage then appears to be higher. Edison International and other nationwide utilities do not even list balloons in their top eight common reasons for outages, since balloon incidences are so low. If we can move to Slide 8, please. A report released by American Public Power demonstrates that in our region, storms are the number one culprit for outages. Balloons did not make the top 10 list here either. If we can move to Slide 9, please. Smart grid technology is where sensors are applied to power lines. The sensors immediately identify an outage, it redirects power, and cuts down on service time. When combined with new state-of-the-art technologies from balloon makers, outages will be reduced significantly and provide more accurate data to the city. If we can move to Slide 10, please. If we can move to Slide 10, please. Now here is the exciting part. The balloon industry identified we needed to develop a solution and in 2011, Anagram Balloons, they are the largest US Mylar balloon manufacturer, was issued a patent on a new non-conductive film. At that time, San Diego Gas and Electric was trying to develop a non-conductive film for balloons. Both companies partnered together in 2015 to collaborate on a non-conductive balloon film and since then, progress has escalated exponentially. If we can move to Slide 11, please. You'll see here that after testing was conducted last year, the non-conductive film worked perfectly. See how the happy birthday balloon is placed touching both wires and does not pop. The two companies are now working with IEEE, the Institute of Electrical and Electronic Engineers, to get certification to move forward. Additionally, the two companies are now working on addressing legislation at the state level. And in fact, when California Assemblymember Quirk, who was bringing legislation to ban balloons in the state, was printed, I'm sorry, presented with this exciting development, he held off on pushing forward with the ban. Banning balloons would cause a huge setback in our industry, in the industry funding to finish the last stage of development for the non-conductive balloon. Since Glendale Water and Power is working to replace aging equipment, it is only reasonable the balloon industry be given time to address and resolve issues as well. If we can move to Slide 12, please. Is the current California balloon law working? Yes. The number of outages are greatly reduced and is due to responsible retailers always keeping balloons weighted down. Does everyone abide by the law? No, and that is the problem. It is on the honor system and no city or state government enforces it. While so many follow the law, a ban penalizes everyone when there are just a few violators. If we can move to Slide 13, please. The industry focuses a great deal of effort on public awareness through national campaigns like the Smart Balloon Practices Campaign and making September International Balloon Month. We hold public events to get the word out. If we can move to Slide 15. Awareness includes the B Smart, I'm sorry, B Balloon Smart Pledge, which encourages children to never release balloons and teaches them how to dispose of balloons properly. And if we can move to Slide 15, and this is the last slide. What is needed is a precedent-setting solution which does not devastate Glendale businesses. We propose a solution which would drastically reduce power incidents. We don't need a new balloon law when there is a current California balloon law. The city can enforce the current California balloon law with easy implementation. We all know issuing fines to violators will change behavior quickly. This measured and reasonable approach to reduce incidences could be done without causing any economic harm to the 200 balloon businesses here in Glendale and it directly penalizes the few irresponsible businesses which are causing the issues. In closing, you mentioned you wanted to be precedent-setting. By enforcing the current law, you will be. You will be the first city in California to enforce it and in the process will save the businesses in Glendale. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, I have a question. Did you see summary of alternatives at all?
It's a little difficult to see while being on the call and how things are set up virtually, but I did see the four alternatives that they had listed.
Is there any one which will be closer because apparently, I mean, I shouldn't discuss this this way, but however, since you are representing them, you know, there is, we don't want to have Mylar balloon here with some sort of light gas. Okay, let's assume that we can't have with helium. So which alternative will be best will serve your industry?
I'll be honest and say I would prefer to be able to see all the four alternatives in a non-stressful situation where I'm trying to see, you know, listen to you on the phone and also see your past, your past alternative. However, tentatively, I would say number 4 appeared to be the most helpful option. Though please know that any ban you pass will not solve the problem. The real solution is enforcing the current law, which would require everyone to wait balloons.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Andrew Simon, Andrew, you're live.
Hi, Mayor Avriginian and city council members. Thank you for taking my call. I'm calling just as a resident of Glendale. Actually moved here almost four or five years ago from the East Coast. And I would like to say first of all, I absolutely love it and have had an amazing time living in Glendale and getting to know the people here. I'd also like to bring up the fact that I and my wife are also very much in support of the Armenian community and what's happening in Artsoc right now. We actually live on Artsoc in Glendale and we're part of the rally this weekend. But aside from that, I am calling in response to this Glendale balloon ban because we are very much against it. I was on the call last week and I did hear the Glendale Power Company saying that there was outages being caused by balloons and in the last four or five years, I have experienced none that I can remember. So something like this, to me, I just don't feel is very important to be voted on, to be honest. And I think there's other priorities that we could probably spend our time if we were to vote on something. But that is all. I appreciate your time and thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, next caller, please.
Steven Johnston, Steven, you're live. Steven, can you hear me? Steven Johnston, you're live. Steven, can you hear me? Steven, you're live.
Hi there. Yeah, this is Steven Johnston with San Diego Gas and Electric.
Yes.
So I'm just calling in to sort of confirm what you just heard previously. SDGNI has been working on a non-conductive balloon design to work with what are regularly referred to as Mylar balloon. We've been working with Anagram on that and we've had extremely good results. I've heard that Glendale operates at 12,000 volts and 4,000 volts for their overhead electric system, which is the same voltages that SDGNI uses. And we've tested these prototype balloons on our grid in an overhead test situation and they passed, all the balloons that were tested passed. So I just wanted to confirm what you heard previously about the development efforts and also that we are engaging with Assemblyman Quirk at the state level to find a ban for the electrically conductive balloons while the industry transitions to the non-conductive alternative. So the one thing I would comment on, the language in your options, is from an electric point of view, at least for San Diego Gas and Electric, it's the helium-filled that are the largest problem to the overhead electric system. And again, it's only for the current designs which conduct electricity and future designs that don't conduct electricity should not have that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. Are you familiar with our summary of alternatives?
I just saw it for the first time this evening online.
Oh, so you can't comment on it, can you?
Well, only to say that in my opinion, the helium, the balloons filled with helium are the, are the true problem. Air-filled balloons should not be a problem to the electric, overhead electric system.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Next caller, please.
Sahid Kowafarci, Sahid?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, Sahid, you're live.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Sahid Kowafarci and I own a party supply store in Glendale. I've been in business for 20 years and we've been selling latex and foil balloons and we always send them out to the balloon bay to be on the space. This balloon ban would definitely hurt my business and about 10 to 20 flower shop, small mom and pop business that I work with that I supply for them and their business is already being, being hurt by the pandemic and this is going to even do this down even more. I also work with lots of ballooners who use the foil latex and this will also, will hurt their business as well. I also like to say that educating customers and educating retailers as how to safely sell this product will be a lot easier to do than banning Mylar balloons, which is going to hurt a lot of businesses. And in this pandemic, surviving just even, you know, maintaining is really hard already. And City of Glendale always been helpful and as you can see, they're helping all the restaurants by letting them using the sidewalk so they can, you know, have income and increase their revenue. And this balloon ban is going to reduce our revenue by this 25 to 30%. It will cause layoffs and cause, let me, you know, have the more people go. I'd also like to mention that with this, it does not stop from people bringing balloons to Glendale. Glendale residents can easily go by the Mylar Way on north, south or east or west and buy the balloon and bring it to Glendale. And if his intention is to let them go, they will. But about 80 to 90% of the balloons are sold are used in house and in hall. And after they're done with their event, they'll get disposed and they don't, do not end up on the street. And you know, if by accident one or two ends up, it's, you know, it's by very accident. And again, if we educate people, if we let people know that if you waste a balloon and do not let it go, it's safe for everybody and it's safe for environment, that will help all the businesses around and we're talking about the 30, 40 businesses, small mom pop stores that, you know, they need this income and that will definitely reduce everybody's income.
Thank you, Mr. Kowafarci. Is there any other caller?
Yes, Mayor, there's one more caller. Oh, there's two more. The second one just came on. Bert Culver, you're live. Bert, go ahead.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. So I'm a resident in Montrose and, boy, there's feedback on this line. So I was just calling to support the Mylar ban. And I, I like the idea of being able to continue selling air-filled balloons because that would be good for the businesses and those don't pose a threat. And possibly maybe the law could be written that we can't have conductive balloons that are filled with helium so that once this new technology is available, they can start selling it immediately. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Next caller, please.
Arax Tellerian, Arax, you're live. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, you are on the, on, on the air.
Hi, first of all, I would like to thank you all for supporting our Armenian community. It's been really hard for all of us because I'm also Armenian. And thank you so much for each and everyone for your support. Second, I would just like to talk about this proposition you have about ban of the sale of Mylar balloons. I own a business, it's particularly a balloon shop in Glendale. We, it's called Bellamy Balloons, we're located on Granoff Boulevard. And we opened this January, so right a few months after we opened, the COVID-19 happened. Which hit really hard our business, but we did our best to stay afloat. So I was just wanting to let you know how hard it will be for us to keep, to stay in business if you ban the sale of Mylar balloon. As Steven from LA Balloons mentioned, and we use them, they're our resellers. So we work a lot together and as they said, we are all very responsible. We all tell our clients not to, we weigh them down and we tell them not to let go. But our particular business is mostly on delivery. So we either set up a banquet halls when they were open and now we go to customer homes and we set up everything ourselves. So from our end, we make sure everything is weighted down, especially if it's with helium. So no incidents were reported. So I understand the concern and we do our best to help our city stay safe. So I would really appreciate it, as Steven said, we can just enforce the California law on the Mylar balloon sale and just not ban it in Glendale because as he said, it will very much affect our business and all other businesses, the party plaza and other small businesses in our beautiful city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Arax. Next caller, please.
Mayor, I do have a caller. I'm waiting for the name to pop up. Joe Lobovitz, Joe, you're live. Go ahead. Joe, can you hear me? Joe Lobovitz? Joe, can you hear me? Joe just hung up, Mayor.
Okay.
I think he is calling back. It looks like the phone is ringing.
Okay, let's listen to him.
Joe, you're live. Can you hear me, Joe?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, good. Hey, I just wanted to make a couple of quick points. My name is Joe Lobevitz, I'm with Mayflower Distributing. I called a couple of weeks ago. First of all, I just want to thank the mayor and the council members for giving me an opportunity to speak here tonight. But I just want to reiterate a couple of points that I think are really important and I hope we're not getting lost in all the subterfuge here. The majority of sales, the vast majority of sales in Glendale and nationally are helium-filled balloons. So basically what we're looking for as an industry is, you know, we need a bridge to get us through until all the money that we've spent on R and D comes to fruition in this non-conductive material. I don't know if you, you know, if it's been stated earlier or not, but the industry has spent millions of dollars developing this technology and it would be a shame to put a whole bunch of companies out of business, you know, right before we had a material that essentially solves the problem. You know, and again, that's basically what we're looking for today is we just need a bridge to get the companies, you know, through this period. It's not that, as the guy from San Diego had mentioned earlier, you know, this is a problem that the industry's been working on for a long time. You know, and like I said, spending a lot of money to develop a solution. So just like the power companies, you know, need to upgrade their grid, you know, we're, you know, that's their bridge, you know, to put the lines underground, to, you know, to use insulated wires, those things also solve the problem, but it takes time to get all that stuff done and we understand that. You know, we, we just want to make sure that you understand the, you know, the gravity of the situation and how it would be detrimental to the industry significantly. And it would cost jobs like we've talked about, you know, affect many, many people's lives. So I just want you to think about that and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other call?
Mayor, there are no many, no more callers.
Thank you. Just before I go to my colleagues, what worries me is what to do. Apparently Mylar balloons are causing problem for us. But I don't want to be in a situation not to allow use of Mylar balloons if it can be filled, as has been mentioned here in the summary of alternatives, not to be able to sell it with, filled with air or another gas which is not lighter than air. I don't want to see layoff of workers in Glendale. I mean, now it's a hard time. I mean, people are having problems. Now we want to create a situation that more people to be laid off. I mean, I'm upset with it. I mean, we are having problems. We have to create jobs and not to cut jobs in Glendale. When except government workers, they all go, go through hell and except maybe supermarkets, they are doing very well. I don't see any other business. Uh, I don't see any other business, starting with mine, the TV station and going to our businesses. I guess everybody's suffering, so we shouldn't create a situation that people, they have to lay off workers. Is there any other? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before council deliberates on the item, perhaps we have Ms. Martorozin, there's just a couple of points she wanted to address, uh, based on what the the speaker's comments were. If that's okay, I'll ask Doreen to just make a couple of comments.
Uh, Doreen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Just a couple of points, um, so that council has that information as we're deliberating. Um, the way on the issue of, um, conductive versus non-conductive material, the way that we define Mylar balloon in the proposed ordinance, and if I could direct your attention to the proposed section eight point eighteen point oh two oh, um, Mylar balloon means metallic balloons made of electrically conductive materials filled with helium or gas which is lighter than air. That's a proposed definition. So hopefully when these non-conductive materials come into the market, those balloons would be automatically exempt from our ordinance. The second point was, um, on the issue of enforcement. Um, the city attorney's office cannot enforce the provisions of the penal code. We can enforce the provisions of the Glendale municipal code. So at most enforcement would entail, uh, perhaps Glendale Police Department issuing infractions under Penal Code Section six fifty three point one, because the way that that code section is written, it states that the first two violations are infractions and all subsequent violations are misdemeanors. So the we would not be able to file a misdemeanor complaint for a penal code charge. Um, it's just we don't have jurisdiction to do that. So those are the two points that I have. Thank you.
And if I could.
Yes, Mr. Garcia.
Again, just to to reiterate the point as you raised regarding, um, being able to sell, uh, balloons with that are filled with air, um, just to reiterate, the alternatives two and three allow that option of the then to be filled with air, either tied to a post or the decorative, uh, you know, the decor- decoration, uh, required to be sold, uh, filled with air at the time of sale, the point of sale. And one and four, it's it's a little bit more open ended and as we noted last week, it would seem that that would that would, um, make your the ban, if you're going to move in that direction, less effective because it would allow, um, those balloons essentially to be filled with helium later after they're sold. And so it would seem not to serve the purpose for which you're you're considering this particular item. So two and three would be the alternatives that would, if you want to consider allowing them to be sold, uh, and filled filled with air at the point of sale, either one of those options would would get you there.
So what was the problem? Because one of the callers who was in the business saying probably he would rather see four, what's the problem with four?
I I suspect that the the caller wanted, uh, option four because it provides the most flexibility, including allowing them to be sold, uh, in a deflated state, um, and they could be filled with helium later. So I I, you know, without asking him, that's that's my thought as far as why, why they were going there.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Divine, I guess you were going to say something.
Thank you. Um, since I brought this forward, I I thought we we should, um, uh, maybe try to remember why this was brought to us because the hazards, because of the hazards imposed on our electrical system, because of the possibility of fires, the explosions, uh, the the our staff members, our linemen that have to, uh, repair, uh, you know, and and it's a very dangerous job and also the impact on our environment. That's why we're doing this. Uh, we're not just doing it, uh, because we don't have anything else to do. This is important that, uh, you know, these are causing outages. People, uh, you know, they may be sick and need electricity or power and they can't get it. I've been at at bonds when something like this has happened and they have to close and they lose all the food. So there is a really good reason why we're we're looking at this kind of a ban. Uh, I have to say that, and we're not banning all balloons, we're we're just banning, uh, the Mylar balloon. However, um, I think that we can be a bridge. Um, and, uh, and I I have to say that, um, uh, I I loved when, uh, the the one gentleman called and said that, uh, they've been working for nine years on, uh, non-conductive materials and I just wonder how much longer we'll have to wait for those to come out. But and that would be the precedent setting solution. That would be it, if they would come out with that, uh, non-conductive, uh, material. But I don't know when that's going to happen. So, um, what I'm suggesting is that I I think that, uh, instead of being, um, you know, draconian, um, I I think if we look at, and I'd ask my colleagues, because I'd be happy to introduce this ordinance, uh, if I can get a, or move the the ordinance, sorry, um, uh, if we look at alternative three, where they are filled with air, they are part of a, um, on a post, they're part of a, they're held down to the ground and, um, and we can do that. And, uh, as I want to thank, uh, Ms. Martorozin, thank you for all your work on this, really appreciate it. Um, and as she says, you know, they will automatically, they come out with a non-conductive material, they will automatically be allowed to sell these in, uh, uh, helium filled, uh, Mylar balloons in or whatever the the, uh, material is in Glendale. So I would like to hear from my colleagues and I'd be happy to move this ordinance if we can come to agreement on alternate alternative number three. Thank you.
Mr., yes, uh, Mr. Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I do sympathize with the industry. However, it's encouraging to see that they are on the cusp of creating a non-conductive Mylar type balloon. We did put this, uh, this was put forward to prevent the sort of outages that we've been experiencing. And I think you can tell a squirrel from a, from any other cause of outage, Mr., you're not blaming it on the squirrels unfairly, are you, on the outages like one of the callers?
No, no, sir. No, sir. Uh, we can graphically prove that it was a squirrel. We we tend not to want to do that in public setting.
Good, thank you. So I I support the alternative put forth by Ms. Divine, uh, allow the sale of only air filled Mylar balloons on a post or a decorative structure. If you've got to have something that is floating in the air, you can use latex balloons. So I would support, uh, the alternative put forth by Ms. Divine, number three.
Is there any other comment by Mr. Brotman?
Um, yeah, I would just, uh, say the same thing. I I I can support alternative number three. I, you know, never liked being in a position where we're we're having to do something that harms, um, the revenue opportunities for our, our, um, residents. Uh, none of us like to do that, but I think, uh, as I said last time, when we discussed it, it's it's, uh, there's a negative impact on a few, but if we don't make this, um, uh, move, if we don't pass this ordinance, there's a larger negative impact on many. So I think we just were in this position where we have to weigh, uh, the two sides and I think it's clear, um, where the, uh, the the greatest impact is. And so I do support going ahead with the ban and, um, I'm okay with alternative three as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian.
Yes, so the issue here is, um, essentially the disruption of our, uh, ability to provide power to our residents and stakeholders. Uh, and I know that there's been some comments about how Mylar balloons are not necessarily, um, a part of this or that, you know, it's very hard to prove one or the other. Obviously, I agree that with, uh, our director, Zern, that it's very easy to demonstrate the difference between Mylar balloon outage and a squirrel or any other type of outage, palm frond, whatever it be. Um, and so the question is, how do we go about this? I personally think that, you know, with the absence of Mylar balloons, we're not going to be missing out on much. I think it was said at a previous council meeting, maybe it was council member Najarian, maybe it was my other colleagues who said that, you know, kids were fine before Mylar balloons, they'll be fine after Mylar balloons. Um, I'm fine, I guess it it looks like the majority, uh, is for option three. Um, and if that is how we better, uh, the reliability of our electric grid, um, I'm fine to move forward with that. But, you know, I would like to see that, you know, this idea that there's been this effort to try and have an alternative, uh, to Mylar that's been languishing until the San Diego, I guess, Gas and Electric or, um, whatever the other company was, I can't recall the name at the moment, um, merged and now we're coming up with this groundbreaking space age technology to prevent the outages. Um, well, you know, I mean, they should have been thinking about this for a long time already. I mean, this is not a new problem. And so hopefully, I don't know, I I mean, I would I would go as far as to say that, you know, we we put a timeline on it, that after a few years, we we ban the Mylar balloons unless they come up with a specific material that is not conductive and does not cause disruptions, because otherwise it's just going to continue and continue and there'll be other reasons for them to not come up with it. I mean, at what point, I get that it's the customers that are, um, letting go of the balloons, it's not necessarily the retailers. I empathize with the retailers, we're selling this product that is, um, not being handled properly, but to say that there's a state law, which is obviously very difficult to enforce, I would like to know how many times it's actually been enforced, um, is not enough. It's not enough. Um, we have to take action. Uh, and if it's option three, then we pick option three, and if that doesn't work, then we go further. Um, whatever we need to do to make sure that we don't have these outages is just simply, um, what we were elected to do. Um, and with that, um, if anyone else has seconded it, I'll be happy to second it.
Thank you. Mr. Zern, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, sir. I I mean, there was a lot of misinformation that was was, uh, quoted by some folks. I don't think it's necessary for me to go all the way through that. I think you and all of the council members are very, uh, in tune with this particular issue. So if you have a specific question, we'd be happy to answer it. But, uh, again, I know Mr. Garcia had had some issues, uh, about certain alternatives, but again, from a very parochial standpoint of the utility, air filled Mylar balloons do not cause us a problem.
Okay. Mr. Garcia, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, we need somebody to make the motion on, um, the ordinance at eight A.
I can't believe, uh, somebody seconded Ms. Divine and Kasakian.
Right, I bet, but we want to make sure that alternative number three is mentioned in the motion.
I just want to, yeah, I want the record to be clear. So introducing the ordinance with, uh, with alternative three, somebody make the motion and then second.
Okay, so I'm so moved.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajania?
And then, Mr. Mayor, there is, um, an item, the resolution at seven B, uh, A two, that needs to be moved as well.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajania?
Yes. Is there next item, please?
Next item would be Glendale Water and Power Clean Energy Program. One motion authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with Franklin Energy Services LLC for a four year commercial and residential electric demand response program in an amount not to exceed seven million four hundred ninety four thousand nine hundred ninety five dollars and an online marketplace in an amount not to exceed one hundred sixty three thousand three hundred sixty eight dollars for a total agreement amount not to exceed seven million six hundred fifty eight thousand three hundred sixty three dollars. Two, motion authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with Lime Energy Services Company for a seven year commercial direct install energy efficiency program in the total amount not to exceed eighteen million nine hundred thousand. Three would be motion authorizing the city manager or designee to go, excuse me, to negotiate contract with Sunrun Incorporated or its affiliate for a residential virtual power plan for a term of up to twenty five years. Four would be motion authorizing amendment in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand to professional service agreement number eight zero 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 five eight six with NewGen Strategies and Sol- and Solutions LLC to perform a cost service analysis and develop an electric rate plan for set programs and review GWP's, uh, distributed energy rates. Five would be resolution appropriating six million nine hundred twenty five thousand eight hundred fifty six dollars. Six would be motion providing direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Golani.
Yes, Mayor Agajania, Member City Council. We are very excited to bring this item, this very important item, forward to City Council for consideration and further direction. I know it's taken a while, but Steve Zern and his team in GWP over the last couple of years have worked diligently vetting and negotiating with a select number of firms to be able to bring the potential of implementing more clean energy, the city of Glendale to this point. With that, I'll turn it over to Steve Zern, General Manager of GWP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, as as Mr. Golani indicated, it gives us great pleasure to be able to bring these, uh, to you, uh, in some, for some, a long awaited, uh, presentation on on these clean energy programs that that again, as Mr. Golani had said, are very important to our, to our overall efforts in achieving the goals and objectives of not only the city but of the state of California as well. We have a presentation for you. I have a team of folks here, uh, Mr. Golani had again mentioned them. I have Ms. Godinas, uh, Mr. Young and Mr. Keenan from GWP, also Mr. Georges from NewGen, who is our, uh, cost of service analysis and financial consultant. Uh, and I think we may also have, uh, Howard Wong on as well, who's our risk manager, uh, and and did the credit backgrounds in case there's any question in that regard. So we're going to try to push through this presentation. I know most of the council is very familiar, all of the council is very familiar with the programs, but we'll, we'll try to push through this and get to the the meat of the of the issue, which is answering your questions and seeing where we go from here. So with that, if we could, um, is it all me?
I can do it from here if you want.
That'd be great, because I'm sure I would not do very well. Uh, just as a recap, uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, July twenty third at twenty nineteen council meeting, uh, the motion that was passed by the council included these key components. It improved the, uh, the twenty nineteen integrated resource plan, the foundational document for us moving forward. It authorized a limited notice to proceed, uh, in the development phase for the Glendale Energy Center, and this was the 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 thermal portion and the battery storage, the grid scale battery storage. It authorized the clean energy program negotiations to achieve best pricing, uh, in terms with four firms that had been shortlisted from an original, uh, thirty four proposals that we received in in response to our request for proposal. As the negotiations proceeded, we narrowed it down one more firm to the three firms, and those are the three firms that are before you today. So the council also gave us direction, uh, that sixty days before any purchase of the internal combustion engines, the thermal units, the the wortzillas that we, uh, had decided on, at least as far as a limited notice to proceed, we would report on the 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 following. Additional, um, distributed energy resource programs, opportunities to get additional transmission capacity, opportunities to renegotiate with LADWP regarding reserve requirements, options to reduce or eliminate the need for five units. Five units was the maximum number that the council had given us, uh, approval to proceed, at least on a limited notice to proceed. And the idea was to see what else we could come up with that maybe able could reduce that number five to 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 less, to a lower number. Um, and then develop, uh, a plan or goals and objectives, uh, for achieving a hundred percent clean energy by twenty thirty or sometime before the state mandated, uh, deadline of twenty forty five. And many of those we have updated you on, uh, in various formats. Uh, certainly the transmission issues and and some of the negotiations with LADWP, we've, we have, uh, updated you on. Um, and as I indicated to you, uh, the last time we we discussed this, the what I'm calling the twenty thirty report, forgive me, that's that's how I, uh, refer to it. We've already got that underway, uh, and are working with our consultants and primarily Ascend Analytics to see what it would take to get to a hundred percent by twenty thirty or some date before twenty forty five. Maybe it's twenty thirty five, maybe it's twenty forty, but we want to look at how we can chip away at that and get there sooner.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um, I just wanted to highlight quickly before we jump into the meat of these three programs, the, uh, extraordinary and extensive efforts of the Glendale Water and Power Department. It's really been a cross disciplinary effort to, um, to bring forward these programs, looking at everything from how you're going to permit and, um, working with the Building and Safety Department to the engineering and metering of these new systems to, um, marketing. Information technology has really been a key issue. Who owns the data? What are the cybersecurity protocols? How do we get, um, our systems to talk to these vendor systems? Um, regulatory issues, including the renewable energy credits, legal and contractual issues, of course, but also customer safety. of course, but also customer safety. These are customer facing programs and we want to make sure that the vendors, as they go out in the community, they're identified and that it's clear that this is a GWP program. Obviously COVID-19 has had an impact, so we have to look at that, particularly when you look at, for example, a customer commercial energy efficiency program and the impacts there. And then finally, the COSA impacts, how does this impact rates? What are the cost impacts? Next slide, please.
So at this point, we're going to have some, both Mr. Keenan and Mr. Young go through and give you an overview of each of the, of the three programs. Craig Keenan will be the first with Franklin Energy and Lime and give you the highlights of that. Mr. Young will come back and talk to you about the Sunrun, and then we'll get into some of the financial issues with, Mr. Georges can also join in. So Craig, if you could.
Craig, are you muted?
There he is.
Hello?
Yes, Craig.
Yeah, I, I had called in. I, I didn't mute, so I'll start over again. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Craig Keenan. I'm the Deputy General Manager of Business Services, and I will present on the Franklin Energy and Lime program. The Franklin Energy program is a residential commercial demand response program included with the residential will be some, we will allow small business program, our customers to participate in the program. The commercial program will target larger customers, 50 KW or greater in demand. That program will include an audit of their facility to help them identify ways they can reduce demand during an event. Residential customers will participate using a smart thermostat. There'll be two ways to participate. They can have a smart thermostat already and we will give them an incentive of $50 to sign up. The, or they, if they don't have a smart thermostat, they can go to our online store and receive a rebate of up to $100 to purchase a smart thermostat. As part of the program with Franklin Energy, there will be an online marketplace where customers can purchase energy efficiency products. Next slide. The Frank, or the program will be a four-year program. It'll start in January 1, 2021, and it lasts until December 31st, 2024. The DR season each year will be June to October. It'll be up to 15 events per year, up to four hours per event. The residential program will be automated and controlled by software. Residential customers will be allowed to opt out two events per season. Commercial DR will be auto or what's, or manual options without outs permitted. If they have our energy management system, we'll link up with that and control their systems automatically. Otherwise, commercial customers will have a list of things for them to go around their building and turn off when the event starts. The next program is Lime Energy. This is pretty much a straightforward energy efficiency program. It's the direct installation of energy efficient lighting and HVAC systems. It's targeting customers with demand at or below 150 KW per meter. The process basically Lime will go out and do an energy efficiency assessment of the facility. They would develop courses for customers. They would direct install the measures through subcontractors, then report the energy savings to us, and we will pay Lime based on the energy savings for that year. It's a seven-year implementation, January 1, 2021 to December 31st, 2027. The measures that are installed are back to the last 10 to 15 years, average about 12 and a half years per measure. With that, I'll turn it over to Mark Young, and he will talk about Sunrun.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Mark Young. I'm the Deputy General Manager of Power Management, and I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the Sunrun program and their.
Excuse me, Mr. Young. Mr. Young, excuse me. Could you go closer to the microphone?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah. So I'd like to, yes, I'd like to talk to you about the Sunrun Virtual Power Plant program. Basically, what a virtual power plant is, is when you can combine small generating sources with energy storage and operate them holistically so that you can get economies of scale. And so instead of dealing with kilowatts, you'd be dealing with megawatts. And in this virtual power plant, we have solar being installed on three or 4,000 single family residences with associated battery storage attached to it. And we will also have 30 to 40 multifamily housing properties with also batteries associated. This program, this program has a capacity to reduce peak load of 25.5 megawatts, which is corresponding to the amount of battery capacity that is given to Glendale to be able to dispatch as needed through a computer software. After the four-year implementation, there should be approximately 28 megawatts of solar output that Glendale would be able to enjoy through a power purchase agreement with Sunrun. The life of the contract is 25 years, and that should equate to about 9,380,000 megawatt hours or 38,520 megawatt hours a year. Interesting part about how, how this virtual power plant works, if we could change, if we could go to the next slide, I'd like to, to show you an example of how this virtual power plant can benefit the city. It, it's rather confusing, but if you look at the current line, the current line is our peak load during the hottest peak day, which was September 1st, 2017, where we peaked out at 346, 347 megawatts. If we had this virtual power plant, the blue bars that are going downward would be solar generation that would be charging a battery. So it would be considered load. As the solar is being produced, it would be charging the battery. As the battery gets full, the blue bars start to go positive. When they start to go positive, the discharge of the solar will be attributed to load. And you could see at our peak of the day, we could start discharging that battery, essentially causing that gray dotted line to turn into the green dash line or the, the green dotted line would be your essential load reduction. And this is vital for us since we're really paying attention to peak reduction. This, this program is going to be one of the biggest in the country, if not in the world. And I'm, I'm really excited about this load shift. It, it does the things that we need to do, especially since we're constrained in transmission import capability. This does exactly what we're looking for by reducing the peak for the day. If you have any questions on the power plant, I'd be happy to answer at the end or now, depending on council's direction. I know this is a very complicated concept, so I'm not sure if we want to wait till the end or we want to let it, let, let the questions be answered now.
Continue, I guess we will ask question at the end.
Next slide. So this, yeah, Ms. Kadenas can, can go over how, at this point, we have the agreement structured with Sunrun and, and we are still, we have not finalized terms with them. I, I think it's important to mention that, and there are still some areas of negotiation that we need to complete. But with that, I'll let Christine go through the details.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So we have.
Excuse me, I'm very sorry. When you say is not complete, when, what will happen next? I mean, from now?
At, at this point, I guess, if, if you, and the majority of the council members are in favor of proceeding in whichever manner we are proceeding, we will then finalize the, the terms of the agreement and, and enter into that agreement with Sunrun. It's just, I didn't, we didn't want there to be some, a, a thought that we had completed every single asset or aspect of the, of the contract. And Christine, if there's anything you might want to add on that, but we, we would continue to go forward and just finalize the agreement.
When you finalize means we can't change anything? What it means finalize, I mean, will be finalized form and we have to accept it or we still are not obligated? We can't change few things if tomorrow technology changes?
Yeah. It's our intent to try to get the city of Glendale an even better deal in the terms. Maybe not necessarily the actual cost, but we want to improve the terms a little bit better for us, and we want to continue to negotiate those. And we can bring back the final terms and show you.
No, but what I'm worried is final term when you say, final terms, when it comes to here, still we can't change it, right? It's not something that you already finished with Sunrun and it's final, just words or sentences we have to change. Still we can.
Mr. Mayor, it'll be the end of the negotiation. We will have reached an agreement and we will bring that agreement to you. Can there be changes to it? I would say it's, that's, you never say never, so I guess we could, if it's council's desire to go back and ask Sunrun, the council's to ask for another or something different, how do you feel about that?
Because I'm, I'm, I don't know if I stopped it here is the right place to do it. See, this is a project you're talking about $243 million, right?
Correct, for 25 years.
For 25 years. And that makes it more worried because every day this technology is evolving. Things come online that it, I mean, more companies, they're rushing to come to California, to California for, you know, this solar or other energies. And they offer maybe better alternatives, let's say this. So I don't want to see that we are blocking this somehow that we can't change it. This is the same thing, I have to say, when I came here in 2017, we had this gas turbine, turbines and 262 megawatt, which I, in 2017, I said, no, I don't like it. And if you remember, because April 10 means a lot to me in 2018, we took different direction, right? Since April of 10 of 2018.
Correct.
We took different direction because of what I objected to those gas turbine. So I'm afraid that, imagine from 2017 until now, even yourself, you changed a lot. You came with new ideas, new technology. I'm afraid that if you go too fast, spending 243 million dollars for 25 years, we will lose the chance to have better technology or cheaper one and more efficient one. That's what bothers me for the long-term contract with this Sunrun. I want to go, I want to say Andron, Andron, but this is Sunrun. So however, that's my opinion and that's my worries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Brodmann.
Oh, well, I'll let Mr. Garcia answer first.
Well, I was, again, just to reiterate, nothing, this, for Sunrun, no direction to approve these contracts is being given tonight. If, it would only be a direction to further negotiate based on what's being discussed as part of the report. So, yeah, as Mr. Zern said, we'll bring it back, it'll be subject to final council approval, and then you'll have to make the decision at that point whether to move forward.
Final approval and changes if it is.
Correct. However, however, as we get there, I mean, the staff will really need to know whether you're comfortable with the broad parameters of what's being set before you. If you don't, are not comfortable with the term or, or the dollar amount in, in the, in the big picture, you, you need to provide that direction to your staff because they are going to go back and negotiate, you know, based on what they're hearing from the council tonight. And so I don't think it behooves us, you as a council or, or the staff, to spend that amount of time and resources if we, we have cold feet at this point to continue that part of the negotiation. So my suggestion is to let Ms. Kadenas and the rest of the staff can, can continue explaining what the proposal is, and then the council can have that discussion. But I just want to lay that out there, that yes, it's always subject to council approval, which means it's always subject to council change. But it, it, we really need to hear at this point, are you comfortable moving forward with what the broad parameters that are being put forward to you tonight?
All right. Because, Mr. Mayor, what we have proposed to you is based on the 25-year agreement with, with the, the product, the way we've proposed it. If there's something different, we would literally have to go back and possibly, if Sunrun was not amenable, we would have to start over. But this technology is not groundbreaking and it isn't, you know, it, it's just a matter of how it's been packaged, which is very different than, 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 than it has been packaged in the past for, for entities that are pursuing this type of, of technology, and it's a very large scale. But for this particular, what we're showing you tonight is based on a 25-year agreement. It's based on the amount of power that, that we've indicated here, the peak reduction. If you wish to change it to a 10-year agreement or something like that, we would likely have to start the process over again, if Sunrun was even willing to do that. Is that impossible to do? It's your call. Absolutely your call. But just so, so you know that this is based on, on the terms and that we have laid out and that Mark laid out previously.
I just want to say that after finishing some sort of negotiation, bring it back. Let's do cost of service analysis. You know, last time, as I mentioned, 2018, until now, major changes came about. So don't rush and don't, I don't want to stop you from negotiation, but I don't want you also to rush for getting to some understanding and say, this is it. That's what bothers me.
And we're going to talk about that at the end of this, about the options.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Brodmann?
Yeah, I was just, I mean, we could do this later, but I, I just thought I would say, first of all, that, and, and Ms. Kadenas, I'm sure can, can talk about this in more detail, but we do have the option in the agreement to terminate if we find that, you know, this isn't working for us for some reason. Now, the, the installations that Sunrun would have done up to that time, those will be in place, there will be panels on rooftops, and those will be generating energy for 25 years. So those, that's like if you're going to put solar on your house, you know, you can always say, well, I don't know, the technology might change, I'm going to wait a year, I'm going to wait two years, I'm going to wait three years. At some point, you say, you know, it's good, I can use it, I can benefit from it, it's cost effective, I'm going to put solar on my roof. And, you know, that's the way it is with technology. Technology is always changing, but you're getting the benefits and you're, you're, you know, you're not, you're not stuck in always waiting for something better. So just, you know, I would just hope you keep that in mind, that we have to, at some point, and I think this is beyond the point, we have to at some point say, we're going forward, we're going to put those solar panels on our roof, for instance, and knowing full well that, you know, this is a multi-year rollout, and if we find that, you know, something has completely fundamentally changed, we can, you know, we can pull out. We have those terms in, in the agreement already, or at least in the preliminary agreement already. So I, I just think it's important to, to realize that. And when you talk about going fast, remember it was two years ago that the RFP went out, and I think, what are we now, in October? It was more than two years ago that we. It was more than two years ago that we got the original proposal for the virtual power plant from Sunrun. So I don't think we're going too fast. I think we're going too slow, and I'll talk about that a little more later. I understand, you know, this is a very simple concept, but to execute it, it's extremely complex, I understand that. So I just think we need to be cognizant of all those, of all those points.
I just want to say, even with solar, things has been changed. I have on my house, things change so much that it's hard to believe, even with the panels and the prices and other stuff. So to rush is okay, but we have to be careful to. We are talking about $243 million. It's not 60 million or 16 million or 7 million, two items which we discussed before. I didn't say anything, but this is a major, you know, I mean, too much money and too long. Maybe it should be better to do it 10 years, who knows? I mean, today, solar energy is great. As I said, I believe in it, I have on my roof, so anyway.
No, the point is, we're not putting out $240 million on day one.
I understand, but you have the obligation of $243 million.
No, we don't, we do not. That's the point I'm making. The point I'm making is that this is a program, and as we pay, as these projects get installed, right? But we are not obligated to the entire rollout, because we can terminate.
It depends, we don't have the contract, how it will be formulated. You don't have the contract.
Ms. Codenas, talk about that.
Yeah, well.
That's not true, what you're saying.
If we can move, I think we can cover all these, we can talk about the, there's a four-year rollout on Sunrun, and there is a four-year buyout on Sunrun as well, that we can, we could, we could stop the contract during that four-year period. But there's some other issues that are in play that I want to talk about, but I think if we get through the presentation, we can get to those scenarios and better, better inform you or give you better information in which to make your decision.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, so just briefly to cover the agreement structure as we've contemplated it up to this point, we would have various agreements with Sunrun. We've structured this as a power purchase agreement, which means that Glendale gets the energy from the solar panels and the battery capacity, with a portion of it being reserved for the customer. So we would enter into a power purchase agreement, which gives us both the energy, the capacity, and the renewable energy credits, which are important to Glendale for its compliance with state law. We would have an implementation agreement, because we, as mentioned, we'd have 3,000 to 4,000 of these installations on single-family residences, plus 30 to 40 on apartments, and we'd have to have permitting and interconnection for each of those. So there's going to be agreements to accomplish that. There's also going to be agreement between Sunrun and the customer, because the customer has to agree to allow these solar panels on the roof and the batteries on their property as well. So Sunrun will be entering into an agreement with the customer to accomplish that. And then lastly, the customer will remain a GWP customer, but in order to give them the incentive, they would have an incentive payment to participate and to become part of the virtual power plant. And with that, the next slide, please.
So this is a recap of what Mr. Keenan and Mr. Young had gone over, where you see the program type, see the proposed capacity, and that's, as they, you can see there, those are the rollout periods, Franklin by year four, Lime by year seven, Sunrun by year four, when they complete their rollout. And you're looking over there in the right-hand column is what your peak capacity, this is what's really critical. Total megawatts proposed by the three firms would be 43.55 megawatts, but the average peak capacity, where it really is critical during the highest demand parts of the day, you can see the various numbers there, Franklin 7 megawatts, Lime 6.2 megawatts, Sunrun 25.3, and you get a peak capacity of 38.4. This is, this is all good, this is good. You know, you can, you can talk about price, and you can talk about cost per megawatt, but this number of megawatts, and I think Mr. Young had alluded to it, is exciting for us to offset some of the other options that we have and some of the concerns that we have with our future generation and our future acquisition of power. Let's see what we have next. And then here, these were the contract costs, so kind of a recap of how we went through this and came up with it, but it really, this is kind of lays out the motions that are in front of you for the total costs that we have in here. And we've added in this, the cost for the COSA, to redo the COSA, which we think is critical, I think is critical, and again, we'll talk about that a little bit more. But you see, we've also added here something that we haven't talked a lot about to this point, but we've got internal costs. So we've got IT integration costs, we've got service planner costs, we've got building and safety costs. And we can tell you based on the number of installations that we do with solar, and this is primarily just solar, because I think we've only had one battery installation, but with just solar, the amount of time it takes us and the intensity of the effort for the staff, we extrapolated that based on, you know, these 3,000 or 4,000 and how many they would roll out approximately, if you just did simple math, let's say it's 4,000, it's a four-year rollout, it's 1,000 a year. We're going to be very, very busy, and we don't have the staff to do that. So the ramp-up period is rather, you know, is a short four years. We're not necessarily saying that we would hire FTE positions, but we're going to need some level of help during that period of time, whether that's contract labor, whether we bring in hourly labor, but we are going to need some level of help. And we went through, again, looking at the number of hours that we dedicate to that based on what we've done in the past, and came up with that figure of almost $6.5 million. So the total of all of the, all three programs, plus the COSA update, you're looking at a $270 million price tag. Of course, you've got the various contract terms, so that's not as, I think Mr. Rotman mentioned, it's not a check we have to write tomorrow when we start, but we have different terms of the contract, but if you're looking at total costs over the, including those terms, that's the kind of number you're looking at.
Just a brief question, if I may. When you say contract cost, is that our cost for the infrastructure and the electricity? The whole, the whole thing? Or is it just our cost, let's say we want to buy out from the, from the program?
The contract cost is what we would pay them for either the reduction of power or the, in the case of energy efficiency and demand response, we're getting the reduction. And with Sunrun, it is a power purchase agreement, so we're actually buying the power.
That's over 25, that number's over 25.
We are not going to own any of the infrastructure, we won't own the equipment.
About $9 million a year?
Correct.
Ballpark.
Correct.
For the electricity that we would get.
Right.
From the solar panels that are placed throughout the city.
Correct, and if you see, well, we have a slide going up, that $9 million, we actually netted it out in a modeling that we had to send you, and so you actually have savings on costs that you're currently incurring, so we netted it out, and it's about 6.7. So we got that nine down to about 6.7.
And I'd add, sorry if I could just, it's for electricity, but also for the capacity, and I think that's important to point out.
Correct, it is the electricity and the capacity, yes. Okay. This, I'm going to let Mark Young talk about, this is, this is, is the Lazard Levelized Cost of Energy, and it just gives you, it just meant, we wanted to give you one, one page out of this that kind of shows a comparison of the different types of programs of which we are looking at here and how they compare overall, and this is a national study that was done. And we'd be happy to share the full study with any of the council members that so desire. But Mark, why don't you go ahead and just go through this quickly?
Sure, this was, this was a way for most people to understand the costs associated with variable programs. And on the left-hand side, you can see at the top of the left-hand side, there are renewable energy, and on the bottom-left-hand side is conventional energy. So what we'd be looking at with Sunrun would be, it would be loosely associated with solar, PV, rooftop residential. So you can purchase that from anywhere between $151 and $242 a megawatt hour. Conversely, if you were to go to a conventional combined-cycle gas plant, it would cost you anywhere between $44 and $68 a megawatt hour. There's a couple of things that it doesn't include. If that gas power plant was remote, it wouldn't include transmission, it wouldn't include the cost of carbon, it wouldn't include any other social benefits that you would get. So it's very hard to compare a rooftop solar project with a combined-cycle gas plant if you don't have all the variables. So we just thought this was a very good thing. We actually introduced this when we were introducing our Open Mountain geothermal plant, to try to give you a little breadth of where geothermal lie with solar and nuclear coal and combined cycle. So it's something to take a look at. I think that the Lazard cost of energy in this report is pretty interesting, so I would encourage anybody that wants to look at it a little bit more to go ahead and download it, I think it's as of 2019. So there's no 2020, this is the most recent.
So Christine, are you going to start to bring us home here and, oh, I'm sorry, this is, this is Tony Georges, our COSA consultant, who's going to talk to you a little bit about how he did the cost comparisons and came up with his projection. I apologize, Tony.
No problem, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name's Tony Georges. I'm with NewGen Strategies and Solutions, I'm the Managing Director of the Energy Practice. Also was the project manager on the 2018 COSA, and was there a couple of years ago to present the results of that study. The results of that study, the 2018 COSA, were used as a base case. Our task this go around was to evaluate the different clean energy options and then evaluate them all together in comparison to the base case or the 2018 COSA results. So in using the 2018 COSA results, that's our baseline, and then we'll look at each option on top of that to look at the total cost impact above the base case for each of them and then all of them together. I would note the base case option, the 2018 COSA results, are equivalent to and fund the plan for the internal combustion engines and the Tesla battery. So that is in the base case, and then each of these are added to that. We did look at, it is important, we looked at a three- or four-year window, 2022 to 2025, and you'll see that full program levels in quotes. That's to equate to allow for the ramp-up of these different programs. These programs take a year or two to fully ramp up to full capacity or the full capacity that they will provide. So we wanted to look at these as best we could on equal footing. So as everything is up and running, we compare them to each other in the base case. Next slide, please. This is simply the graphical results of those three options, and then the fourth being each of, all of them combined together. You will see on the blue, the blue bars are the total aggregate dollar impact above the base case or above the 2018 COSA that would take to fund the option. On the left side, you'll see the left axis, left y-axis, you'll see total dollars difference from the base case. On the right y-axis, you'll see percentage, that's us that dollar amount equated to a percentage. That is roughly equivalent to what will be a rate change necessary, a one-time rate change for these individual programs and then the entire, all three options together along with the base case. You'll see that option one, Sunrun, resulted in an increase of 2.9% in costs from the base case of 2018 COSA, that's $6.7 million, and that again is a one-time change. One time, you can equate that to a one-time rate increase of 2.9% to fund Sunrun. Option two, similarly, Lime is a 1% rate change. Option three is the lowest, that's Franklin, that's more focused on demand response, that's six tenths of a percent change or an increase in costs as compared to the 2018 results. And then finally, option four would be combining options one through three all together with the base case, and that is simply just the sum of the three options at 4.5% and $10.3 million. That's all I have. I mean, Craig, I don't know if you wanted to take this, or if you want me to continue to speak to some of the concerns we had and looking at the COSA?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I'll go through this, and Tony, be prepared, you can answer any questions. I just took a pause there to see if there were any questions about your, your, your cost analysis. But the real crux of this is, is what I'm calling a challenge. This is not a detriment, it's simply a challenge, and it's all related to timing. And that timing has to do with us in the worst pandemic this country has been in maybe ever, and that has greatly impacted the business of Glendale Water and Power. Our revenues are projecting down, our demand is down, our demand charges that we set each year based on the previous year's use are going to be down next year because this is a low-use year. We have redirected a lot of our monies, and rightfully so, towards rate assistance programs for folks that have been negatively impacted during COVID-19, whether that is businesses who have had issues, or it's personal, individual customers who have been affected by COVID-19, and their jobs have been impacted, and their income has been impacted. All of those things have played into our model, and we deferred, we deferred the rate increase, and again, something I think we should have done, and I applaud the council for doing that, we should have done that, but it does have implications to our financial models. The COSA is something we take very, very seriously. When that is adopted for the five years, that is our document of how we live financially in GWP. And unless there is some catastrophic event, and we pride ourselves on even, even making sure that we have resources to react to some of those catastrophic events, we stay within that budget, very, very, very precisely within that budget. But what's happened this year has thrown that all out of whack, so to speak. And so what we believe, and myself, my staff, certainly Mr. Georges, is to get a proper read on where we are financially today and where we are going based on these impacts that we faced, we need to redo the COSA, we need to do a new cost of service analysis. We want to see how that's affected cash reserve, we want to see, you know, and cash reserves could be affected by the rate deferral. We also want to see, a big player that's coming into effect is weather, and utilities are beginning to position themselves because of weather, and really what that means is longer, hotter periods each year, and the unknown of fire season and how that will impact us. The fires may not be in Glendale, but they could very well impact our electrical infrastructure, because as you know, we have transmission lines that traverse different parts of the United States, and many of those are in high-fire areas. So those are also issues that we want to, we want to take a look at. So those, again, those are challenges, they aren't detriments. We didn't want to, you know, to come back and say, well, let's, you know, potentially throw everything out and start over again, because we don't know where our finances are going to be. Look, we have a, we have a pretty good idea, and we have some ideas on where we might even be able to use some alternative sources of funding to at least lessen that, that rate impact that Tony presented to you. Might be a little bit, but every little bit counts. But before we can do that, we need a document that's precise, and that is accounting for the situation we're in today. So that's one of the recommendations we have, and of course, in our, we have a resolution of appropriation to move forward on that. And then, you know, back to the clean energy programs, we wanted, and the way I presented this to the GWP Commission is, we want to try to keep the momentum going. We have worked hard, it has been two years, as mentioned by some, and Christine certainly summed up the amount of work that the staff has put into this. We don't want to lose that momentum, but we also realize it's a big step economically, at least in the one, one option. But there are, we need to project. the one, one option. Uh but there are, we need to project to the public, not only the monetary part of it, but the non-monetary part too, and the benefits from from having a, you know, a clean non-fossil fuel. This is what the objectives were to begin with. This is where council sent us off uh to do. We have local generation. There's no transmission involved here. Uh we involve the community in the solution because it's the community. It's the single-family residents, the multifamily residents and the businesses who are actually participating. It provides benefits to not only the city and our customer base as a whole, but it provides to those who are directly participating in the program. And there's a local jobs issue. I think we we could see very well uh an increase in in the number of folks, at least for that that ramp up period, that that we get back to work. Challenges, you know, you always are going to have reliability issues. That's a really, really critical point for us. You have baseload generation and we still need that to keep the lights on, but we need to somehow, you know, mesh it so that we can make that work. Um there are going to be some distribution impacts. With this much solar and battery in the system, we anticipate some level of distribution impact. And our engineers are going through that that exercise right now. I don't see it as, again, a detriment or or a roadblock. It simply may be that we change our capital improvement program uh and and focus on some of the things that we need to do uh to make this work a little bit better from a distribution system. Um there is no pilot phase per se, and and I think we've talked about the the ramp up periods. But also, if you look at the recommendation made by the GWP Commission, I referred to it as a pilot phase because we have the ability to go forward for a year, let's say. The COSA will take approximately six months to complete. We could make the decision to go forward for a year. We have a four-year opt-out uh right now um uh a term in the contract. We'd we'd like to make it a little bit better, but essentially what we would pay for is the amount of work that went into the project for that year. And I think Mr. Brotman hit on that as is resulting from a a very fruitful discussion we had this morning. And that is, let's say we did end it at the at at one year because we didn't think a twenty-five-year program and three thousand homes or four thousand homes was right. And we have seven hundred and fifty or a thousand homes in that first phase. We'll continue to benefit from those thousand homes. We'll pay for for the installations and we will pay for for the energy we derive from those thousand homes. But if we don't think it works out for us on a larger scale, we have the ability to stop right there. And maybe in in the in the new COSA, we see some things that are a bit alarming. Maybe we can go back and negotiate a longer phase in period uh to try to see if that may, for some reason, help defer some of the costs. So in talking with the commission, and and again, that's their recommendation, is that we would go after, redo the COSA, and then at the same time, ease into this, at least with the first year, come back to council, present the COSA, present some of the uh the the options and impacts that that we see under the new um financial model. We would, we would have a year's uh worth of implementation under our belt that we can come back and report on to you. This is what we saw. This was good. This wasn't good. This is where we want to improve. Maybe this program isn't for us. I don't know, but it gives us an opportunity to evaluate that. And and at the same time, we don't stop. We don't stop dead in our tracks. Um certainly there's an option to do that and just do the COSA and come back and look at it again. Um and and certainly, Mr. Mayor Agajanian, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't say, you know, if we went out again, maybe there was another player in the market that could come in and 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 offer us something. But I will tell you this, we're beginning to back up against the wall. Um those dates that the state mandated to us are coming quick. Not only that, we've got even earlier dates of twenty twenty-four in which most all of the equipment at Grayson will no longer be allowed. It won't be a decision we have to make. The decision will be made for us. Those units will have to be retired at the end of twenty twenty-four. We know three, four, five will all be done. We likely will have eight A, B, and C and nine uh that that we can keep beyond that date. So we've got some 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 real challenges there. And and as you see, these aren't things that we can do overnight. These things don't happen. We we can't just say, wow, we've got two years to twenty thirty-five or we've got two years to twenty forty-five. Let's put in a bunch of stuff and see if we can make that nut. It's not the case. We we've got to be doing it now and planning now and putting the programs in place now. It's why we went after, hard after Eland. It's why we 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 went after the geothermal project when we were the only participant in that project. So these are very important to us. We've got to keep our momentum going. But certainly, the COVID nineteen pandemic has has thrown us a bit of a curveball. And and we've got to deal with that to make sure that we're in line with with our finances. Um and and I think, you know, there has been some comments made uh by some of the council members during our briefings that it also is uh probably a really good idea for us to go out to the public, much as we do when we have a new rate schedule or a new COSA, and present it to them and and use that as an opportunity to explain the great benefit of these programs beyond just the monetary impact. And and hopefully, we can come up with a scenario that that lessens the monetary impact, but at least we're getting out and saying, look, I know sometimes these programs are a little bit difficult to understand and it's a little bit difficult, you know, you want to, you want to categorize them one way or the other, but to try to tell them how beneficial they are as part of an overall renewable and clean portfolio. So with that, um that was a longer summary than I had hoped, but uh I think that's uh, I don't know, Aron, what we have next. That was it. That's that's our our presentation and we would be happy to answer any question.
Is there any question from Mr. Zern? Okay, let's go to the caller first.
Elizabeth Vintanza. Elizabeth, you're live. Go ahead. Elizabeth, can you hear me? Elizabeth Vintanza? Elizabeth, can you hear me? Elizabeth Vintanza? You're live. Can you hear me? Jack Walworth? Jack, you're live. Jack?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm a resident of Glen Oaks Canyon for the last twenty-five years. And being so close to the Shoal Canyon landfall has made us very aware of the importance to balance the energy needs of the city with a clear goal to achieve a hundred percent clean energy as soon as possible. Over the last few years, I've followed the work of Glendale Water and Power towards this goal, and I'm amazed the progress the city has made to date. I listened to the commission's report recently and fully support all three programs that are also considered. They represent a great start to a clean energy program. The intense heat we experienced this summer underlines the urgency to solve urgent energy crunch blackouts, eliminate fossil fuels, and clean our air. Important that our city move forward on other green energy as well. Now's the time to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Stephanie Shush? Stephanie, you're live. Go ahead. Stephanie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members.
Good evening.
Um as said, I'm Stephanie Shush Russen. My husband and I moved to Glendale in two thousand and one. First, I also would like to acknowledge the role the previous council along with GWP and Glendale residents played in broadening efforts to go beyond the original draft Integrated Resource Plan. My thanks to them. The city and GWP has subsequently been exploring clean energy options instead of primarily focusing on natural gas for Grayson. Tonight's update, I must say, was very encouraging. The progress GWP has made in the renewables arena is, as I said, encouraging, both for the positive impact the three programs can have, as well as the way that GWP accepted input from citizen groups to get there. Around the world and certainly in the state of California, clean energy is going to increase. The sooner the better, in my opinion. So I do hope GWP won't stop at the three programs presented tonight. They should continue to pursue other new programs. And now is a great time to do so as innovation continues to drive decreasing costs in the clean energy sector. Many governors are pointing to affordable renewal energy as a factor to attract innovative, high-growth businesses. Glendale can achieve the same rewards if we continue on the path towards more renewable, clean energy. I look forward to seeing this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Danielle Lamone? Danielle?
Uh, yes, yes, hi.
Go ahead.
Um, so I want to reiterate what the previous two callers said and um to thank GWP for the effort that they've been making to uh move us toward green energy. And I also want to second what Mr. Zern and Mr. Brotman were saying with regard to the amount of time that we have, that we really don't have a lot of time. And it's not a, an issue of moving too fast. It's an issue of we really need to be doing this now, should have been doing this a long time ago. Um I grew up here and I've witnessed the increase in the heat and wildfires. Um and it's, you know, really frightening when I think about what future my daughter has to look forward to. And my husband and I are frequently in talks every wildfire season about whether or not we need to leave the state of California for fear that, you know, our home's going to get burned down. So it's encouraging to see that we are making moves in the right direction um to reduce our carbon footprint and to reduce the um uh impact of of climate change. And also, these energy programs will also help us with blackouts that are also being caused because of the demand on the system when it is extremely hot, which is only going to continue to get worse. Um so I support all three um energy programs that are on the table. And I recognize that this comes from a place of privilege, but um I'm willing as a resident to pay a little bit more if that's what's necessary because in the long run, um, you know, it's our our health and our future that's at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Benny Pixion? Ben, you're live. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm a resident and I'm calling to offer my support in moving forward immediately with the clean energy programs on agenda for this evening. Um and doing so without limiting their scopes and also dedicating resources immediately to the cost analysis piece of this for the rate plan. Um as Mr. Zern mentioned in a recent meeting about rates being established from data from the previous year and this year ultimately being an outlier for the various reasons he's bringing this awareness, it will be more important than ever to get ahead of understanding these numbers. And I urge you to not wait for these programs to start before analyzing these costs. Um, you know, as they say, if it can be measured, it can be managed. And anything we can measure now will only help us in managing these complex programs more effectively once the rubber has actually hit the road. And even more so, I'm hoping we can continue to dedicate efforts to understanding how to eliminate red tape such as involving building and safety, the way it sounds like we already are, and ensuring we aren't siloing all of the respective stakeholders in the city. But are all the questions answered about the Sunrun deal? No. Will we work them out? Yes. Do we need to be more aggressive with getting there sooner? Probably. But let's be honest, we need to be more aggressive on all of this across the board. Get these programs in place. We're behind. All that said, I want to applaud Mr. Zern and all the GWP for their efforts in being a partner and helping us get to where we are today. And I call on you two to think about whatever we have on the table today not being enough. What more can we do? How can we expand these types of programs as if our lives, our careers, our appointments, and our elected positions depended on it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next caller.
Efrem Patel? Efrem? Efrem, can you hear me? Efrem, can you hear me?
Hi there. Uh I'm Efrem Patel. I've lived in Glendale for about ten years. And I live about a mile from Grayson. Between me and the plant are a bunch of neighborhoods, schools, and parks. So I was really worried about the expansion, uh, you know, because those emissions can have health ramifications for for lots of residents. And my mother-in-law lives here. I have a six-year-old. So I was concerned and I'm breathing the air too. So I was really relieved last summer that city council had GWP put together sustainable energy plans before doing any expansion. And I'm grateful GWP is presenting those three plans uh this evening. But I'm eager to have city council move forward with those plans as soon as possible because we have a a real opportunity uh right now for this city to be a model of what's possible in clean energy. But we shouldn't be trading energy production for the health of the families who are putting down roots from Glendale. So I'm urging the council to please remain committed to these green energy plans because if we're going to have a bright future, and I think we can, it it needs to be sustainable and healthy. And and we can do this. So that's it. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Next caller.
Elise Kafayan? Elise?
Hello, yes. I'm a resident of Glendale and I am very glad to hear about all the projects GWP has now brought forward. And I ask that the city and GWP move forward urgently now with all these programs and continue to search out more. We really need to um get more local clean energy um on the books right now um so that we'll be a resilient city and producing clean energy and uh getting off of gas and other kinds of dirty energy as soon as possible. Thank you for all these efforts and please move forward now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Kate Unger, you're live. Kate?
Hi, Kate Unger, uh Mayor Agajanian, members of city council and staff. Thanks very much. I want to start with thanks in particular to Mayor Agajanian, council members Divine and Najarian, who were on council in July two thousand and nineteen and who approved these projects to move forward, along with a motion that sought goals for a hundred percent clean energy in Glendale and ways to avoid new gas burning equipment being installed during a climate crisis. And it's great to see these programs coming to fruition now. I'd also really like to thank city staff for its hard work bringing these projects through the negotiation process. The city can't really afford to hesitate now that staff has put so much effort in on these programs. And I hope that now that the city has gone through this process, it can pursue more clean energy projects with the benefit of experience, move more quickly through approval to implementation. Uh we really can't afford to move slowly, as everybody has been saying tonight. And Mr. Zern has said not only that, but also uh very eloquently that there are many benefits to these programs. Those benefits greatly outweigh the cost. Um he he probably said it better than me, but a couple of things that occurred to me. Local clean energy is a crucial asset to make sure Glendale's grid is resilient and can withstand the stresses of extreme heat that we face more and more thanks to the climate crisis. Local clean and distributed energy are premium local resources that meet and reduce peak demand. They also decrease the load on the distribution system, reducing the likelihood of equipment failures. And they're very cost-effective, making it the smart choice for Glendale residents now and an investment for the future. Glendale needs programs like this to be part of the climate solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Monica Campaga? Monica?
Thank you. Uh good evening, Mayor Agajanian and council members. I'd just like to commend Mr. Zern and the GWP staff for all of the hard work they've done negotiating these projects and applaud council's initial support of them back in twenty nineteen. Um I'm a hundred percent supportive of all three projects, as you, I'm sure, aren't surprised. And I hope the council will support them moving forward fully and quickly. I also support doing the COSA. Um I just, as Mr. Zern uh eloquently pointed out, these projects will bring many valuable benefits to our community. Uh some of them include the very Some of them include the very crucial and highly priced local capacity, the local economic development benefits. For example, it's my understanding that the Sunrun project alone could bring something like 50 new, high-quality local jobs, including for the work to install the thousands of panels, could bring resiliency benefits, not only for the city but for thousands of residents who will have the benefit of backup power from the virtual power plant. And all three of these projects, as Mr. Zern pointed out, allow all of us, from homeowners to big commercial property owners, to be part of the clean energy solution. Lastly, I think our virtual power plant looks like it's going to be, if this moves forward, the biggest of its type in the entire nation. I mean, that is simply incredible and something that really could be the headline we want to see for our city. So I hope council will wholeheartedly support all three of these projects and move forward with all of them now. I also hope they move forward with new proposals, including customizing energy efficiency agreements with some of our biggest energy customers that I know that was discussed in the commission meeting, and also a commercial solar battery storage program. Thank you. And I just want to end my comments to say that I firmly stand with the Armenian community in a call for peace in Artsakh. And I thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comment.
Alex Bartroff? Alex?
Yes, hi. Hi, my name is Alex Bartroff. I just wanted to echo the comments that have come in so far. I think it's important to understand that with the recent wildfires and the pandemic and the economic situation that we're in, that our city is exposed and we're vulnerable. And I think it's imperative for policy to move forward on decentralizing our energy supply and putting an emphasis on more local supplies. And I think these programs do that for us. So I wholeheartedly support this initiative. I think that you should move forward with it. And I also want to thank staff for bringing forward such a technical and complex policy direction and distilling it for the public to understand. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller.
Bert Culver? Bert, you're live.
Hi, thank you. And I want to echo what they've said about thanking the council and G W P for their effort on this. I'm really excited about all three of the projects. I want to reiterate what Mr. Zern was saying, that this is 23 megawatts, approximately, if I forgot the number right, off the top, which that means less, that much less capacity we have to build. So that would be that much less stranded asset we would have down the line if we end up building something with gas. So that's very important. And another thing, there was a lot of concern about cost. One of the big mistakes governments make when there's a recession is pulling back and stopping spending. That's when they need to spend more because that creates jobs. And a project like this is going to create a lot of jobs, installing insulation, solar panels, all, every little bit involved in this. Maybe the contracts could specify that it has to be local unions or local waivers, but I don't know. I don't want to get into that. But anyway, I'm a resident of Glendale and super excited about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Joanna Pringle? Joanna, you're live.
Hi, hello, Mayor Agadjanian.
Hello.
I've lived here for over 35 years, and I just want to thank you so much for pushing forward with this clean, with the clean energy program. Children cannot postpone growing up, and we need to do everything possible to improve the air quality as fast as possible. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next caller.
Elizabeth Ventenza? Elizabeth, you're live.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, Mayor Agadjanian and council, thank you for putting together city staff. Mr. Zern, thank you for putting together this proposal and plan. I support all three of the plans in place. I'm a homeowner in Glendale. I'm also the parent of a nine-year-old. I haven't had the windows open. We haven't been able to play outside for almost the last, oh gee, month and a half because of the heat wave and the poor air quality. So we need to be investing in clean energy locally. So I support this, and I can't wait to be one of the first people to sign up for the virtual power plant. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller.
Mayor, that was the last caller.
Okay. So apparently we have, we do all this together, Mr. City Attorney, all the items on eight, eight, one through six?
Sure, after the council's had a chance to discuss and deliberate.
Is there any comments?
Why don't you go to Mr. Brotman? Why don't you go to Mr. Brotman first?
Okay, Mr. Brotman.
Well, this is a special moment for me personally. I think, as everyone knows, I was a big critic of the direction that the city was going in when it proposed the original Grayson repowering. And I pushed hard for us to move away from gas, which is a very polluting fossil fuel, and to, you know, enter this brave new world of distributed clean energy. I'm now very, very proud of where we are and what we're doing. And I want to give a huge thanks to Steve and to Mark Young, Craig Kuhn, and Doreen. And I know a lot of other people were involved. I just don't know everybody's name. So thank you very much for getting here. And as I said before, I know the virtual power plant, which is something I started talking about and my colleagues in G E C, Environmental Coalition, started talking about two years ago, and we kind of punted the pavement in Glendale to see what the interest was. We found that many, many, many people were interested in being part of the solution. And that's what's so powerful about this. People can participate in this clean energy revolution. At the same time, people are very interested in this idea of getting a battery that is going to be there if there is outage. The part of that battery power is reserved for the homeowner or the resident if it's a multifamily situation. And that, I think, it's going to be something that when people realize that it's available and off to them, then I think they're going to be really excited. So anyway, that's, you know, that's kind of what I have to say. Let me add a few things. I mean, I do think that this has taken too long. I think that more resources should have been put on this two years ago. However, it is what it is. It's water under the bridge. And I fully support us moving ahead and adopting the recommendations of the Glendale Water and Power Commission. I do want to say that I agree with some other council members that have expressed an interest in going out to the public once we have the new COSA and just being very transparent and upfront about these programs. What are the costs? What are the benefits? I want to make sure when we do that, that we do it on, we look at these programs compared to the thermal alternative on an apples-to-apples basis, really looking at the full life cycle of costs and benefits. I know that that's hard to do, but I really encourage us to do everything we can to set the frame properly so people can really understand that some of these things that may look expensive because we're paying upfront really give us benefits over very, very many years. And that needs to be laid out clearly. I also want to say that, you know, there is a lot missing. And I don't, you know, I want to focus on, you know, the glass half-full, the glass half-empty. But I do want to bring back very shortly a request for us to start looking at what comes next. And as some of the callers mentioned, there is a huge opportunity for solar and storage on commercial and industrial properties, just like we're doing with Sunrun, that concept of a virtual power plant. We can be doing that at larger scale across commercial and industrial sites in Glendale. And it should be more cost-effective because of the economies of scale. We should be doing more energy efficiency and demand response with our largest accounts and a number of other things. And I won't go through the list here because I'll come back to it. But I think there's still a lot of low-hanging fruit. Yes, it sounds simple, and I know it's really, really complicated when you're in the trenches putting it together, Doreen. So I understand your pain, but it's something that we'll really be proud of. We, we're the first city in California to pass a Sun Downtown Resolution. We're the first city to just now having put in a ban on Mylar balloons. I think we're going to be really proud when we're the first city that can tap up the kind of virtual power plant that we're going to launch here, which could really be a model for the rest of the, of the state and the country. So I couldn't be more pleased with where we are. And I, I hope I can have the honor of moving these items, given, given all the time and energy I've put in, no pun intended, time and energy I've put into this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Divine?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I want to, of course, thank staff. You've done an amazing job with this. I know it's not easy when you get into these contracts, vetting all of these companies, et cetera, but thank you so much for all of your hard work. It was an arduous journey, I'm sure. The three-pronged plan, I think, is groundbreaking. It's exciting. But Mayor Agadjanian, you're right. It's scary. It's like we're at the precipice and we have to make a very important decision. But it's new territory for all of us. But this is, as one of the commissioners said at the meeting, this is the new utility reality. And so our goal in Glendale has always been on this council to provide efficient, reliable, and cost-effective clean energy to our residents. And by golly, we're going to stick to that, that goal. I do see a challenge in cost effectiveness, but, and which must be articulated to our residents through outreach and education. They have to see the social impact, all those benefits, and then they think they'll all be ready to, to move into the future. I mean, we know that that's what we're doing. We're investing in our future. There is a need, absolutely, for an updated COSA to extract the precise financial impacts that these programs are going to have. But these plans are, they're going to be producing energy, we're going to be saving energy. It's just going to benefit everyone. I do agree with the Water and Power Commission that we should ease into this and, of course, do the COSA. But if we ease into it during that time period, we can kind of see what's happening, how the residents are accepting the programs, what's new out there, because that's one of the conditions that was in that, that resolution that we passed last summer, was the fact that we would always keep our eye on new technology. And we can do that. All in all, I think the energy programs are the next big step that we have to take to that, to reach our 100% renewable goal, and we have to involve the entire community. So let's move forward with this. I want to, you know, I want to compliment my colleagues because tonight we managed to do something, first of all, that our state legislators, legislators could not do. You know, we actually accomplished something that they couldn't do in our, in our balloon ordinance. And now we're starting this program towards 100% renewable energy, which will be unprecedented in our state. And I, I really believe this, that the way to predict the future is to create the future. And that's, that's what we're doing tonight. So I'm so glad that Glendale can be a leader in this effort, and I'm very, very pleased and proud to be a part of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Krasachy.
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you. I concur with my colleagues that this is a very important step towards making sure that we have a more sustainable source of power and energy. You know, we have read recently that there's going to be no more gas-powered combustible engines for sale, according to Governor Newsom, which will inevitably increase the demand for electricity. It will increase the demand in people's homes as they're charging vehicles. It's going to require for us to be creative and figure out ways, and I think to meet that demand. And I think that this is one of those ways. I want to thank my colleagues who brought this forward, who championed it. And I support all measures that we can to make sure that we get this. And thank you, by the way, to staff. I know that staff has worked very, very hard on this. I have had, I've expressed to them during the briefing, some of my reservations based on the early adopter figures that we're in right now, but I'm confident that they have learned from the past and are moving forward by crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is. I think this is very exciting. Everyone in Glendale who's been advocating for a greener city should be proud of what we're going to do tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I definitely like the direction that we're going. It is critical for us to have local power generation as well as a robust demand-based reduction, such as the Franklin Energy and the Lime Energy. So with Franklin and energy and Lime Energy, I think those are, you know, when you talk about the low-hanging fruit, I think those are very good. Those are savings within the residential and commercial accounts where we work with them on reducing their inefficiencies, working with their thermostats and, and whatnot. As far as Sunrun goes, if Sunrun's watching this meeting, I don't want you to think that we're, you know, all in because we have some negotiations to do. And I am, would be insisting that staff be very firm with Sunrun. We have to work out the contract terms, as Mr., as the mayor indicated, and there are many terms to be negotiated. So in essence, Sunrun is going to be on their own dime installing the photovoltaic cells on homes throughout the city. They are then going to be producing energy. There'll be a battery in those homes, but they're going to be selling that energy to us. So they are going to be recouping their capital costs, their labor costs, and of course, they have to make a profit. You just don't recoup your costs. You have to make a profit on this as well. So I think we should support staff and urge them to be as tough as possible with Sunrun. Let them not think that this is a done deal and they can jack their price up because the city of Glendale is going to take whatever they give us. As of now, it looks like we've got a very basic, and we won't even hold this to you, but a 4.5% cost increase. When we do that COSA, I, costs matter to me. And it's, if it's a matter of going out to the community, that's great because I know the last time we tried to increase electricity rates, there was outrage, and that was only a couple percent. Costs do matter. So whether we put this before the voters informally, whether we put this formally, perhaps, as either a survey or an actual proposition to them, they need to have input because they are the ones that are going to be paying for the clean energy that we are striving for. I'm a little bit disappointed, however, also in the Sunrun, there's a lot of associated internal labor, marketing, IT, and integration costs. Looks like there's $6 million. Is that over the 25-year or is that a yearly basis?
That's essentially the ramp-up period that we would have.
The four years.
The first four years, right. That's where most of the cost is.
So we have to keep an eye on that. We're, we're very, and we bear those costs, correct?
That would be us, yes.
Okay, so we've been, this council has been very strict on budgets. We were talking about furloughs a while ago. We were looking at our bottom line, which still isn't the most solid. So that's, that caught my eye. I have a big circle around that. But the, the one area that I am disappointed in is the utilization of the Wartzila internal combustion engines. The engines are The engines are adaptable to hydrogen fuel without very much change. You need to harden the valve stems, you need to harden the connecting rods. Let me finish. I see you're getting excited on that.
I just want to say one thing.
Do you want to say it before I continue?
I just wanted to clarify, they aren't advanced in the hydrogen at this point, that's on the further horizon. A non-fossil biofuel is where they're very much in tune at this point, so that would be kind of the first place you would go.
Okay. So we were on the steps of City Hall, wow, three months ago, Dan Brotman was there, it was a hot day, I think the Japanese, the mayor was there, the Japanese consul general was giving us hand sanitizers that they had gifted, and he was talking to us about the engines that they're developing for the Inner Mountain Power Plant, which run currently on a, they're Mitsubishi engines, currently running on a blend of hydrogen and natural gas. I think that's perhaps the first step, and that's in the near future. But to make it completely hydrogen-based, and hydrogen has, the emissions are very healthy, water vapor, and is that it?
Yes, and it's developed through an electrolysis process using renewable energy to create it, so you never use any type of fossil fuel. Sometimes you can make hydrogen out of natural gas.
Okay.
In this case, it's an all-green hydrogen.
So in this case, I don't want to get off track, we've been talking about the Shoal Canyon gas, methane gas production. I'm not sure if production is the proper word, but the creation of that through the landfill, one of the proposals was, hey, ship it down to Grayson, burn it in Grayson. Well, we don't want to burn it in Grayson, but what you're saying is that through electrolysis, we can extract hydrogen from the CH4. CH4 is methane, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so there's plenty of hydrogen there. So it's also storable. Europe is developing storage capabilities, it has to be either under pressure or refrigerated, and there's also chemical creation. So we've got these Wartzillas, which could be running perfectly clean if we can just find a way to store the hydrogen or to create it. I'm a little bit disappointed that we don't have more focus on that, because if, in fact, we have a situation like that, I think the cost of producing electricity through our Wartzilla internal combustion engines is imminently scalable, flexible, and produces no emissions. So let's not keep our, take our eye off that. I think that's going to be coming up very soon in the future, and especially as automobiles, I'm not talking about fuel cell technology, which is different, but actual hydrogen internal combustion engines, which I think are a great opportunity for us to pursue. And let's not throw everything else out. The Sunrun is interesting, we've got some negotiations to do. The Lime and the Franklin are a little more easier to just jump right into, but let's keep our eye on those Wartzillas. It'll be local generation, emission-free, scalable, cheap. So you may be on that already, and I'm not, I know we talked, when we talked about the Wartzillas on the plan that we adopted last July, we always said that we'll keep our eye on the availability of hydrogen power for those Wartzilla internal combustion engines. At the time, we were considering a natural gas power, and there seems to be a move away from that, which is fine, but let's not give up on hydrogen. I think that's a technology that may solve much of our problem, not all of it, I'm not saying it's going to solve everything, but it's something that certainly we'll have the opportunity to explore. So I like Franklin, I like Lime, let's negotiate like hell with Sunrun, I'll be willing to walk away to make the best deal with them, and I think we have to do that. Unless you're willing to walk away, you're not going to get your best deal. And keep an eye on the Wartzilla hydrogen availability, and it's going to take, when we do our COSA, we're going to have to do a significant outreach to the residents, make sure they understand all the benefits of going renewable in our portfolio, and listen to them and hear what they have to say on it. So that's where I'm at. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, staff, for bringing this report forward. I don't want to repeat what Mr. Najarian said about hydrogen centers, what the Japanese are working, and they're willing to discuss the issue with us even. I didn't see that we invited them to discuss these matters with them. Hopefully you'll do it in the future.
We have engaged them and continue to be engaged with them.
Okay, so let's continue that. So I said I don't want to repeat what Mr. Najarian said about hydrogen and what he has said about Sunrun, I'm sorry, Sunrun. I have no problem with Franklin Energy and Lime Energy, but on what Sunrun has to do, I hope also we will follow, I just want to make sure that we will follow the new technology to bring the cleanest and more efficient system to Glendale. So that's what I mean to look into this matter. I'm not saying I was the one, again, I repeat, in 2007, I went, I was against those gas turbines. And from that time, Mr. Zern discussed with me a few times about, we came from 260 to 191, and I was saying that's not enough, right? And then we came to 135 megawatt of gas, and I still, I said, not enough. And eventually, I was thinking about 100, he came up with the idea of having 90 megawatt of gas. Last time when I discussed, maybe a year and a half ago, I don't know when we discussed this. However, we are in the right direction, but I don't want to, I want to follow and see what's the best technology, what's changing in the world, and not to concentrate on one company, and we have to keep our eyes open for new technology. With that, I want to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm ready to move the, I can move all the items, but the motion authorizing us to sign the agreement with Franklin Energy and with Lime, and to negotiate a final set of terms and conditions with Sunrun for the virtual power plant, and also, the motion also authorized the funds for a new COSA and the resolution of appropriation for that. So if I could move all those items together?
All of six items.
Mr. Mayor, there are six items, number six is a motion providing any direction separate from the other items. And just to be clear, so items A1 and 2 are the motions on Franklin and Lime, and they are authorizing the city manager to sign those contracts. So that would be the direction you're giving.
Right.
I know there was some discussion about the COSA, but that would, the COSA would follow that. I just want to make sure that that's clear and that you understand that, and then everything else is as noted. So 1 through 5 would approve the items, and 6 is only if you have additional direction beyond the approval items.
So I would be 1 through 5.
Second?
It's okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Katsakhian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia, does my discussion on the hydrogen constitute direction or just friendly suggestion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Najarian, my only comment would be, we are going to be back before you, I'm estimating next summer, with the Wartzilla and Tesla component of this, and it'll be the revised EIR, draft EIR, and that's the opportunity to talk about all of this. We can update you on our, our discussions with Wartzilla have been primarily about non-fossil alternative fuels, and up to and including hydrogen, which is, like I said, a little further out. They've actually purchased some synthetic fuel companies in Europe that they're developing fuels with. So I think that would be the opportune time to do that.
I'll spare you a motion then.
I will, I will, I will pass, I will pass on that, and I'll wait for next update.
So what's next, please?
Next would be city attorney regarding acting compensation for interim city manager. One resolution authorizing acting compensation for interim city manager.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, I was waiting until apparently he has to leave.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, in conjunction with the hiring of Mr. Galanian to be the interim city manager effective October 17th, the item before you is to pay an acting rate of compensation, acknowledgement of the additional duties that the interim city manager is tasked with taking on. The, per the council direction, the resolution before you would provide a 5% increase in his salary for the period of his interim city manager service.
And that amounts to $1,502?
That is the total cost of the salary and benefit load associated with that increase. The actual increase is about a little bit over $1,000 in salary.
Oh, okay. All right.
So can you explain the position for the meantime of assistant city manager will not be filled?
That's correct, so, sorry.
What's the cost savings on that?
So if, if, let me pull that out. Councilmember Najarian, so the total savings during the period of the interim city manager appointment will be $36,876 per month, while the permanent city manager position remains vacant.
All right, so do I have a motion, any motion?
Move the item.
Second. Is there Mr. Najarian seconded? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Katsakhian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
What's next, please?
Next would be oral communications.
Do we have any?
It looks like, Mayor, it looks like we do have a caller on 8B, just came in 30 seconds ago.
Okay, let's listen. Oh.
8B was interim, yes. We've already voted on that.
Oh.
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor, whether you take the call.
Let's take the call.
We need a motion for reconsideration.
Only if the council wants to reconsider after hearing the comment.
Let's listen to.
Mike, you're live. Mr. Moyo, you're live.
Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Moyo. I did call in earlier, but I didn't get in, I don't know why. But here's my speech, okay? Why is this council considering giving Assistant City Manager Rubik Galanian the interim position of city manager with an increased pay of $22,089.90 per month, which is 5% above his current monthly compensation? According to the staff report, given that the budgeted, excuse me, according to the staff report, given that the budgeted city manager position for former city manager Yasmin Beer was, will remain vacant during the interim appointment, there will be a net cost savings of salary and benefits in the amount of $36,876 per month, while the position remains vacant. What a ridiculous statement to justify a $22,089.90 per month salary increase for Mr. Galanian. Council members, the $22,089.90 per month pay increase will increase the taxpayer's pension liabilities. You talk about the pension crisis as an annual lead, Councilman Najarian, and then you will approve the pay increase for Rubik Galanian. This country, in the state of California, is seeing a record-high unemployment because of the Chinese virus. Disney Corporation, the airline industries, and other companies just laid off about 383,000 employees this past week. Mr. Galanian, Mr. Rubik Galanian should be happy to be receiving his Assistant City Manager salary and benefits of $361,000 per year. Let me repeat myself, $361,000 per year. California taxpayers only give Governor Gavin Newsom an annual salary of $209,000 per year. Why does this council continue to pay the city manager and all the city directors more money than the governor of California? Why, a few months ago, this council approved a 20% pay cut on the city clerk's position, yet our other elite city directors have not seen a pay cut? Other cities have cut staff and reduced salaries, but not the city of Glendale. In private industry, interim managers do not get a pay increase until they have actually proven themselves. Only where we have a government union making the rules does this occur. Tonight, this council can change the city charter and make a new rule that interim city manager and any manager, acting directors or managers, do not receive a pay increase until they have proven themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other caller?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, yeah.
Yes, let me say something, then, I want to say something, since this came up. We did not give $22,000 pay increase. We gave only $1,000 pay increase. His salary came from a long time ago. We just, for being an interim city manager, we raised his salary like $1,000. Okay, now, Mr. Brotman?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Mr. Katsakhian, I'm very sorry.
The amount here is not the issue, that's irrelevant. In terms of the city's practices, whenever someone is in a position where they're acting outside of their classification, and the city attorney and city, I don't know if Mr. Boyle is around, but they can answer this and clarify it, it is appropriate, and according to our rules, that someone gets a 5% increase for acting pay, and it's tied to the duration. Now, the comment was also made that this is an attempt to spike, or this is going to impact the CalPERS or the PERS retirement. It will not impact the PERS retirement unless Mr. Galanian maintains this role for 12 months for the duration of a year, and then at that time, it may, but I don't believe myself nor anyone on this council has intention of keeping anyone in an interim role. In fact, I've made my position on the city manager search clear, but that's the only time that would impact anyone's PERS, if they were 12 months earning that consecutive salary. Mr. Garcia, is that correct?
Mr. Katsakhian, that is correct, and I would note that under PERS rules, an interim appointment, an interim managerial appointment is limited to six months, or the equivalent of six months in terms of the number of hours, so that's, and you're correct, you're 100% correct, that it is standard practice for somebody who's serving as an acting or interim appointment, whether it's city manager or other positions, receive an acting pay and 5%, at least 5%, so this is certainly within the bounds of that.
Is that all, Mr.?
Just wanted to state the facts and make sure that everyone's clear, and hopefully everyone watching at home has learned a little bit something about how the internal workings of our bureaucracy.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Ms., hold on one second, Mr. Brotman. Ms. Paula Devine, she was going to say something.
Well, Mayor, I was going to say exactly what you were going, what you said, that we were not giving him a, who wouldn't want a $22,000 a month raise? Wow. And I'm sure Mr. Galanian would love that, but unfortunately, it's not a $22,000 a month raise. Thank you. Just wanted to.
Thank you. Mr. Brot?
Yes, I usually don't comment on this caller's statements, but in this case, I'm very disturbed by the term he used. He called COVID, a Chinese virus. That is a racist term, and I condemn it. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other comments? No. I just, I guess, oh.
No more callers.
No more calls?
No.
Okay, so I think we came to the end of this session.
We have new business.
New business, but before we go to, okay, I just want to.
There are no call for oral communication.
Okay, I have a statement to make about Ms. Linda Burns. Maybe I wait until we read this.
Yeah, two items I've given to Councilmember Najarian.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city manager be and hereby is authorized to enter into and execute a settlement agreement with CDM Constructors Incorporated, CDM, and Glendale Respondents Group LLC, GRG, to resolve and settle all claims arising out of a dispute relating to the supervisory, control, and data acquisition SCADA system upgrade by CDM resulting in physical solution and purchased water losses as follows. CDM shall present a tender to its insurance carrier for the claims and agree to pay, and the city agrees to accept $260,986 as the excess of any tender as settlement of the physical solution claim and any tender as settlement of the purchased water claim.
Thank you.
There a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Don't ask me to repeat it.
So do it. So roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Do I have any other choice? Yes. I have, you have another one?
I have another one, Mr. Mayor. I move that the claims of California River Watch, a nonprofit corporation, be compromised and resolved for the full and complete amount of $50,000, and the same is hereby approved and accepted. The finance director is authorized to issue a warrant and said sum payable to the claimant for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution of a settlement and release agreement.
Okay. May I have a second? Anybody is second to second this item?
Second.
Second, Mr. Kasakian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Reluctantly, yes.
Good night.
I just, in closing, I guess we are done with.
No more new business, then, Mike.
Okay. In closing, I want to talk about Linda Burns. I not only knew Linda Burns as an active and caring member of the Glendale community, but Linda and her husband, Henry, were and still are family friends. We often socialized together and always had an enjoyable and entertaining time. God bless your soul, our friend, on behalf of everybody, of course, here. Now, may I have a motion to adjourn on her memory?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So with this, the meeting is adjourned at exactly 10:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, everybody. Good job tonight.